Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person, on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so that it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the June 17th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cava Veriana, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We begin tonight with two celebrations. First, I'm pleased to announce the presentation of the $10,000 Michael Castile Legacy Scholarship for Educational Courage and Justice, named after the Council of Grade-City Schools' former executive director. The scholarship is sponsored by Curriculum Associates. The scholarship will be presented by Michael Castile, former executive director of the Council of the Grade-City Schools, and Don Masters, senior vice president for Curriculum Associates. Going to ask everyone to join me down in front, and then we will turn it over to vice chair O'Neil.
Test, test. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Boston Public Schools and the Boston School Committee have a long history of involvement with the Council Grade-City Schools, which is a national organization that represents the top 78 urban public K-12 districts in the country, so all the large cities. And Boston has belonged for many years, I believe, since its founding. And Dr. Michael Castile has been involved with the organization for 48 years. First as their legislative director, 30 years as their executive director, and the past couple of years as an advisor to their current executive director, Dr. Ray Hart. And Dr. Castile, simply put, and I'm sure the superintendent and chair would back me up on this, is a towering figure nationally in urban public K-12 education. He has been involved in every administration. He has led districts being involved, urban districts like ourselves, being involved in the trial urban district assessment part of NAP. He has pushed all of us to increase our achievement, always keeping districts focused on students, and his work with districts across the country to improve their operations, their leadership, their governance, their management. And several years ago, when he was retiring, I was the vice chair of the board of the council at that time, representing Boston, and was asked to chair a committee on how to honor Dr. Castile's legacy with the council and with all our member districts. And we came up with several ideas, one of which the council board of directors implemented, which is the award we named after Dr. Castile, which is the Michael, Dr. Michael Castile Award for Educational Justice and Courage, because those have been the two guiding lights in Dr. Castile's life in pushing for, making courageous dishes, districts making courageous decisions, and pushing for justice for all of our students. And Curriculum Associates was very kind to step up and sponsor. So each year, the council at their spring legislative meeting picks someone who makes courageous decisions in education. And it could be a legislator, it could be from a nonprofit, someone from outside a council district. And Curriculum Associates then grants a $10,000 scholarship that is chosen by Dr. Castile and a committee and the person who was awarded. So if that's the case, this year, Dr. Castile was nice enough to include Boston Public Schools in the potential for this awarding. And now we're going to call up Dr. Castile and crew to come up to make the presentation.
Thank you so much. First of all, Michael, you are very humble in describing how that award was really initiated. And it was really because of your initiation that this award came about in the first place. And frankly, it's the reason why we wanted to come back to Boston and to award a student in Boston this award, to say thank you to the Boston School Committee, the Boston Superintendent, and, Michael, to you, my friend. So I have to say, when we decided to present this award to a student in Boston, we didn't realize how difficult a task this was going to be. The students that we received essays from showed remarkable talent. These were students already who had done just astonishing things. They had initiated my brother's keeper clubs. They had done fundraising activities. They had started cancer awareness programs. They had done all kinds of things that will continue to make Boston a great city. And the thing that was even more remarkable to me was not what they had done, but what they aspire to do in the future. They wanted to be doctors and lawyers and teachers and detectives and all kinds of things that will help improve the overall future of this nation. But it was the essay that our award winner tonight, Andrew Troncaso, wrote that really stood out to me. And it was filled with passion for not only what he did at the Boston School of the Arts. He played viola. He used his skills to work with senior citizens. He gave back in all kinds of community activities at homeless shelters with military and all kinds of other community organizations in need and took leadership responsibilities in the part-time jobs that he held. But it was how he talked about his mother, who is here and I wish would come up, Daisy, talked about the courage and resilience and determination of his mother and all the things that he wanted to do after graduating from Boston School of the Arts. He's going on to Bentley University to study finance. But he had one big idea in that. As you can tell, if he was a viola major and he wanted to study finance, he was good in math. But one of the things that struck me was that he clearly watched over the years how his family, his neighbors, and others who didn't have the financial skills that it really took to build wealth in the community. It was that that really motivated him to study finance and to be in a position, after he graduated from college, that he could help people who did not have the wherewithal to build wealth to do so. And I thought that was a big idea. And an idea that not only was going to help him, but it was going to help innumerable people who would benefit from his skills and commitment and his determination to do all of that with courage and a sense of justice really struck me as a remarkable thing for high school seniors. So we are really proud to present this award, this scholarship, this evening. But before we do, I'd like to ask Don to say a few words. Don is the vice, senior vice president of Curriculum Associates, who funds this scholarship.
Thank you, Dr. Castile. I'll just be very brief here. It's quite an honor to partner in the awarding of this scholarship, to partner with the council for all these years. And I want to congratulate you. Michael and I had some time to spend just chatting. The poise, the confidence, the graciousness. Really, really excited for you and want to wish you the best of luck. We're a Boston-based company, and so it gives us a lot of pride to be honoring Boston Public Schools students. Thank you.
With that, Andrew, would you like to say a word? Don't have to, but...
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. It really means the world, and you guys are really changing lives in Boston. Thank you.
Just, Andrew, congratulations. And congratulations to mom and your family, because clearly you were the inspiration for all of this hard work.
I'll say to all of you, thank you.
Let's have one bigger photo. Two, ten, everyone. You don't have to get on the upset. File. Take one, now take another. And let me just make sure all our eyes are open. And I think so.
Andrew, your first financial lesson. This is not a check you can cash. Oh, we brought the room.
Michael, can you stay here for one second, please? So if Dr. Castile can just stay here for one second. So Dr. Castile has been an incredible friend to the Boston Public Schools and Boston School Committee over many years. You have no idea how many times he has presented here and back at Court Street to various school committees. More importantly, how much time he has spent with superintendents and senior teams advising us on so many different aspects of operations, teaching us about best practices, how we can improve, always pushing Boston Public Schools to improve. And so you've presented to us many times, but we wanted to also briefly honor Dr. Castile for the work that he has done. And he's going to be incredibly mortified right now with what we're about to say, because he's the definition of a humble leader. But among other things, he's an Army vet. He's a very dedicated and loving husband and father and father-in-law, and as well as thinking of the many millions of children in the districts across the country as youth that he wants to shepherd and help improve. So we wanted tonight to read this proclamation. Whereas Dr. Michael Castile has spent 48 years with the Council Grade-City Schools, dedicated to improving urban public K-12 education across the nation, including 30 years as its executive director. And whereas Dr. Castile built the council into the preeminent membership-based educational organization due to his relentless focus on improving student achievement, strengthening urban school system governance, leadership, and management, and bolstering public confidence and public education in the nation's leading cities. And whereas the city of Boston overall and Boston Public Schools in particular has benefited from Dr. Castile's advice, counsel, and guidance over the years, most particularly in the form of in-depth technical assistance teams in a variety of topics, from finance to academics, from food service to transportation, from English language learners to special education, all designed to fairly evaluate and suggest best practices nationally for Boston to consider. And whereas, due to Dr. Castile's leadership, the Boston Public Schools have participated in the Trial Urban District Assessment, TUDA, as part of the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAP, the nation's report card to measure our students' progress against our peers nationally and provide the data necessary to continue to improve consistently. And whereas, the council recognized Dr. Castile's incredible achievements with the Dr. Michael Castile Award for Educational Justice and Courage, now awarded annually to deserving recipients who take similar pioneering stances in education. And whereas, Dr. Castile is awarding a deserving Boston Public Schools senior with a $10,000 scholarship as part of this award. Whereas, the city of Boston would like to extend a heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Dr. Michael Castile for his longtime focus on improving urban public education and for ensuring, to quote the late Senator Kennedy, "that Boston is always in the room." The youth of Boston have been better served due to your leadership and guidance. Now, therefore, I, Michelle Wu, mayor of the city of Boston, do hereby declare June 17, 2025, to be Dr. Michael Castile Day in the city of Boston. And this Army veteran knows that today is the commemoration, the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Bunker Hill. So all the history that that entails. Congratulations, Dr. Castile.
Thank you so much. And thank you to the city of Boston and to the great Boston School Committee and its superintendent and all of its amazing staff that I've known over the years. I can't even remember the first superintendent I met from Boston. It's been, it's been 48 years now. So anyway, thank you so much.
Just to say that I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. Castile now in the Council Grade-City Schools and truly is an inspiration for all superintendents to just be able to see what humble, passionate about kids' leadership looks like. So I'm so happy that today is your day.
Again, thank you for all that you and the council have done, but especially you over all these years. And thank you particularly for today, in honoring a student and Michael.
Thank you.
We will continue tonight with special recognition for a talented group of graduating, sorry. Thank you, graduating seniors who are ending their terms with the Boston Student Advisory Council, also known as BSAC. These students have proven to be true leaders and powerful advocates for their peers. We are so proud of them, and while they'll be greatly missed, we know they will go on to do great things for the Boston community. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues to continue to be here with me for this presentation. And we have some citations. I know some folks are not with us tonight. I'm going to read one completely, and then we will just read the names. And those who are here can come up and get their citations. Thanks. So this is for Adrena Adams. And it says, "The Boston School Committee extends its deepest appreciation to Adrena Adams, representative, Boston Student Advisory Council, and Excel High School, class of 2025, for providing a strong, consistent voice for her fellow students in the Boston Public Schools. The chairperson and members of the School Committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in extending their appreciate to Ms. Adams for influencing and assisting students to effectively form, evaluate, and understand the district's policies that impact their daily lives and wish her continued success in all future endeavors. June 17, 2025." Usura Ali. Ofelia Anis. From the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. Congratulations and thank you. Vanderbilt, okay. Okay, you want to stand and give pictures?
Yes, thank you.
London Clark. From Boston Latin Academy. Thank you. Thank you. Angel DePina from the John D. O'Brien. Nizreen Beham from the John D. O'Brien. Omar Ishmael from the John D. O'Brien. He'll be joining us a little later. He's our senior superintendent. Paulina Mendez Hagnier from Boston. Where are you going next to you? Boston College. Janelle Mahia, okay. Mahia from Snowden International High School. Iman Mohammed from the Josiah Quincy Upper School. Ishmael Sanow from Boston. Congratulations. And Naomi Via Cole from the Henderson K-12. Next in? Thank you.
Pictures? Yeah, pictures. All right. I have you come up right. Perfect. You talk a little bit right there. Mary, yeah, Mary.
Short people.
Three, two, one. Good. One more. And three, two, one, great.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to begin tonight by taking a few minutes to note the passing of two dedicated individuals who left a lasting impact on both Boston Public Schools and the broader Boston community. First, Joan Hayes, known as Joni, who dedicated 18 years of service to BPS, primarily serving as the administrative assistant in the Office of Labor Relations. Second, Carmen Pola, a passionate community leader who worked tirelessly for the people of Boston and was key driving force behind the evolving approach to bilingual education in BPS. She also served as one of Mayor Ray Flynn's top aides. Superintendent, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so we will begin with a moment of silence for two very special women leaders that we lost since our last time together. Joan Hayes, who we called fondly Joni in BPS. As Chair said, she worked 18 years. And during that time, she worked both at our schools and she also worked centrally, primarily serving as an administrative assistant in the Office of Labor Relations. Joni will be remembered as a kind and supportive person who cared deeply about her work and about her colleagues. She truly touched so many lives over her time here, and her impact will be felt for many years to come in the BPS. And she will be missed truly by all of us. And Carmen Pola, who is a longtime civic leader in Boston. Carmen was a true trailblazer who fought for bilingual education in the BPS. She was born in Puerto Rico, and she came to Boston in the early 1970s and later served as a top aide to former Mayor Ray Flynn. She was the first Latina to run for the Massachusetts State Legislature, paving the way for future candidates. Her legacy truly will live on today as we continue in the BPS and throughout the city to incorporate bilingual programming. So for both of these incredible women, we would ask that you join us in a moment of silence. Thank you, Chair.
And now I would like to offer school committee member, Chantel Lima-Barbosa, the floor to share some news with the committee and the general public.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, to be able to address my fellow committee members and the public. I did want it to let everyone know that, well, unfortunately, next month will be the last meeting for me as your committee member. I've gotten an opportunity that unfortunately I'll have to leave the city, making me ineligible to continue to serve as a member of the Boston School Committee. I've been in the city of Boston for the past five years since I've graduated and had the opportunity very early to be able to serve this, the city, and the city of Boston. I actually have a former colleague of mine that's here in this room. It just feels like a full circle. But I'm very grateful for being able to be here and represent my community voice. You know, a lot of voices are often forgotten and fight the good fight. I know there's a lot that still needs to be done. So that's the hard part, is leaving and feeling that, you know, there's things that I still want to be able to participate. But yes, I just want to thank the superintendent, thank the chair, committee members, district staff, faculty, families, and my family for always supporting me, especially when it's transition time. But thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lima-Barbosa. And as a proud BPS alum, Ms. Lima-Barbosa has brought a unique and valuable perspective to the committee since joining in 2023. She has been an invaluable member, always uplifting student voices and keeping... She has been an invaluable member, always uplifting student voices and keeping their needs to the forefront. Her commitment has been, had a powerful, positive impact on our schools. And now we'll open it up to the committee for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you called me this morning, I felt my heart beating so hard. Gracias por todo lo que diste en el comité escolar. Thank you from my heart for everything you gave to the committee. Siempre recordaré tus intervenciones a favor de los aprendices del idioma inglés, y siempre enfatizaste mucho el idioma nativo y tu cultura. I will always appreciate all your interventions for English learners. Tu abogacía es notable, y yo sé que es algo que irá contigo donde quiera que estés. Your advocacy is very significant, and I know it's going to be with you wherever you go. Te deseo mucha suerte y que todo te salga muy bien. I wish you the best of luck, and I wish the best for you.
I wanted to cry because I just really do value your voice so much. I think you've just brought this great balance of advocacy and ability to put it in very practical terms for how we can operationalize. So just really felt good partnership with you to make change. Also, just like your fierce advocacy for our multilingual learners, and it coming from like your own perspective and experience. And you know, you're a BPS kid. It's grown up. And so I'm going to just deeply miss that in a lot of ways. But I also know that you... But I also... But I also know that you have so much talent and passion. And I know you're going to follow your dreams in doing that. And in that process, you're going to, whatever you do, you're going to do with your heart full, and you're going to help people. And so I'd never be in the way of that. So I think this is not goodbye, but this is till we see you again. So congratulations.
And Ms. Lima-Barbosa, as I said to you this morning, this is a win for your new future employer and hopefully for you personally. And this is a loss for the Boston School Committee and Boston Public Schools. As the others have said, you brought a great voice immediately onto this committee. Your thoughtful approach, your practical approach, how you push the district, but also your sensitivity to the challenges and needs of our students. And the Chair and I are both graduates of the Boston Public Schools, and we loved having another graduate join us from a different generation, admittedly. You brought every different perspective than the Chair and I, a more recent perspective, and that was great. And I love spending time with you. You graduated from the Burke, but we were there together for the ceremony to rename it as the Holland School of Technology, and I appreciate your advocacy with the district to make sure that we achieve the second part of that name, not only the Dr. Albert Holland, but the School of Technology, and that the district always honors that. And I know you have advocated quite strongly for that, along with a number of other programs and schools across the district. And I've enjoyed getting to know you. And it's still a small city, so I hope to be working with you in the future. But congratulations.
Thank you again, Ms. Lima-Barbosa, and we are grateful for your service and wish you all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will continue the meeting with the approval of the minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2025, School Committee meeting and the May 28, 2025, retreat. Is there a motion? Some move. Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. So as the year comes to a close, I want to recognize 146 individuals, I'm not going to read all their names, who have retired during this school year or who are currently in the process of retiring. First of all, just congratulations to all of them on careers well-served. BPS employs thousands of people that keep the district running every day, every year, and they are the district's unsung heroes, the people who take care of our students, our families, our school communities in so many different ways. This year's retirees include school leaders, teachers, paraprofessionals, lunch monitors, nurses, clerks, custodians, and many others. Some have served for more than forty years. Others have been with the district for two or three decades. All of them have made an impact on our students' lives, on our schools, and on their colleagues. So I want to thank each and every one of our retirees for their dedicated service to the children of Boston. We appreciate your contributions, and you will be missed. We will formally honor our retirees at a luncheon on Monday, July 14, here at the Bowling Building. We would love to have members of the committee join us as we celebrate our retirees and thank them for their years of service. After tonight's meeting, I plan to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Boston Police Department, which is intended to comprehensively govern schools' reporting of school-based incidents to law enforcement. My team is engaged with community advocates regarding the details of the MOU, who have helped us revise the student incident documentation policy. A factor in signing the document was updating the student information sharing policy, which you may recall you voted on earlier this spring. The MOU will direct schools to report certain incidences to BPD, but only those incidents in the MOU must be reported. That list of incidences is reserved for the most serious of offenses. BPS will not ask or share information on a student's immigration status. Any reporting of these most serious incidences will work in tandem with the provision of school-based supports designed to ensure, to the greatest extent possible, rehabilitation and restorative justice. An updated MOU with BPD helps ensure that we accurately and transparently describe BPS's relationship with BPD. It also ensures consistent changes in the law and best practices over the past several years. Entering into the MOU is operational in nature, so it does not require a vote from the School Committee. But consistent with the terms of the MOU and to further our productive partnership with the community, the MOU will be publicly available once it is signed. On Wednesday, June 4, the Boston City Council voted to approve our FY26 budget allocation that this body approved in March. This vote represents the culmination of months-long partnership between the BPS team, the School Committee, and the council, and allows us to go into this upcoming year prepared to build on our priorities. I want to express my deepest gratitude to City Councilor Brian Worrell for his leadership on the budget and collaboration throughout the process. We have also given School Committee members copies of the finalized FY26 budget book that includes the detailed information on the budget that was approved, and copies will be made available to the public on our website at bostonpublicschools.org/our lowercase budget. Tonight, we'd like to provide you with a fourth quarter update on Transformation Schools, the final report for the school year 2425. As you know, we were required to provide quarterly Transformation Schools updates to the committee as part of the requirements in the soon-to-be-concluded Systemic Improvement Plan, or SIP. The second and fourth quarter updates are part of the superintendent's report, and the first and third quarter are formal reports that go more in depth. More specifically, the Transformation Office shared an in-depth report at the October 23 of 2024 and April 16 of 2025 School Committee meetings. I also provided a second quarter update on February 26 as part of my superintendent's report. As a reminder, Transformation Schools is the term BPS uses to refer to schools identified by DESI as requiring assistance or intervention. These are schools in the bottom 10% of state accountability percentiles. As you know, primary support for our Transformation Schools comes from our Transformation Office in partnership with regional teams and the school division in general. Executive Director of School and District Transformation, Mike Saban, is here to answer any questions you may have. Over recent weeks, we were excited to bring our improvement strategy to life through visits to several of our Transformation Schools with School Committee members. We were able to share quality school plans and our observation tools and to visit classrooms together. Each quarterly report provides an opportunity to share updates in our three priority improvement areas. In the area of instruction and student academic performance, we observe slow and steady progress in the implementation of our district curriculum and in the percentage of classrooms where we can observe active student engagement with each other and with challenging tasks, what we call productive struggle or student-heavy lift. We continue to provide coaching and monitoring as we move toward 100% of the classrooms, meeting our goal of active student engagement with the grade-level curriculum. We are eagerly awaiting the results of our year-end MAP assessments and the 2025 MCAS assessments. These results will be shared with the School Committee in the fall. In the area of school climate and culture, we are proud of the positive climate in so many of our schools as observed in our school visits. Student excitement has also been on display during graduation ceremonies and other year-end activities, as well as within classrooms. Our year-end Panorama survey data shows similar results for Sense of Belonging in Transformation Schools and non-Transformation Schools, with sixteen schools scoring higher than the district average. We were particularly pleased that Sense of Belonging data improved in more than half of our Transformation High Schools. Chronic absenteeism has also continued to improve in Transformation Schools. Both schools serving elementary and high school students have rates declining three percentage points compared to the school year 2324 as of the end of May. However, overall, rates of absenteeism still remain higher in our Transformation Schools than non-Transformation Schools, particularly at the high school level. For instance, at the elementary grades, 27% of students in Transformation Schools were chronically absent as of June 1, seven points lower than students in non-Transformation Schools. At the high school level, 50% of Transformation School students were chronically absent as of June 1, compared to 30% of high school students in non-Transformation Schools. We will not be able to close gaps in outcomes if we do not work together as a community to address this attendance challenge. We continue to try a range of strategies to address attendance, including extensive outreach this summer. Further addressing the attendance issue is a critical part of our improvement strategy as a district. One additional area to mention is hiring. The BPS Office of Human Resources and the Division of Schools continue a close partnership around transformation hiring. We are happy to share that as of June 1, the overall BPS rate of hiring is ahead of the past two years, and that the percentage of jobs filled in Transformation Schools is higher than in non-Transformation Schools. This is a challenging environment for education hiring, but with collaboration and hard work, we can continue to make progress each year. At this point in the meeting, I usually share some bright spots from around the district, but we're going to do it a little differently tonight. First, I'd like to recognize the outstanding BPS communications team, led by Chief Chris McKinnon, for being honored with eight awards in the 2025 Publications and Digital Media Awards from the National School Public Relations Association. The team was honored in areas of infographic and marketing material, newsletter, photo, special-purpose publication, video, and website. This national recognition is a testament to the team's dedication to making sure our BPS community is not only informed with crucial information, but is also celebrated. Now we'll share the special end-of-the-year video that captures highlights from the school year 2425 by our multimedia production team, Marcus O'Mard, Ramon Galvin, and Neil Ray. This video is about three minutes long, and it really, I think, captures a lot of the excitement of our students, including a beloved student, Ofelia, who has through her work brought such joy to our staff here in the Bowling Building. And you'll see her at the start of the meeting. I think we'll all enjoy this very much.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, my friend. You already know what time it is. It's time to wake it up.
She inspires us to be our best.
I plan to be a career teacher, you know, lifelong teacher.
Our hearts beat the same with big dreams to claim. We are all human with love strong within.
Our cafeterias in Boston Public Schools are called BPS Eats, and BPS Eats means local, healthy, and fresh food for our kids.
Cafeteria staff is actually amazing. They treat us like family.
Everything that they make is healthy, and that's what I like about the food. The food is delicious and at the same time healthy.
After that win, like when the buzzer went off, I don't think I've ever felt anything like that.
I see her as a role model, as she was part of that same team.
Mentorship is so, so crucial.
We want to help people reach their goals.
I told him to sign up for the mentoring program.
It's a blessing for me to be able to experience.
We are currently in the Aspen Challenge, and I am here because I want to make a student-led change in my community, in Boston, and in my world.
I appreciate Ms. Fergus from the Agassi Elementary School. She taught me a love for reading.
We have a room filled today with thirty-three valedictorians from around the BPS who just represent the promise, the hope, and everything that's good about BPS.
No matter where you start, no matter what they say about you, no matter what rooms you're excluded from, you belong. You are enough. You are powerful. You are already the change we've been waiting for. So go out there and make it happen.
Hey, Chris, take a bow. Chris, take a bow. Ramon's here.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. And I would also like to extend appreciation and gratitude to the educator staff that are retiring this year. Thank you all for your dedication. A rigorous and rewarding education is not possible without many hands and hearts. And I'll now open it up to discussion and questions from the committee.
So I have a comment and a question. Thank you, Superintendent, for honoring so many of our retiring teachers, and I look forward to that celebration in July. And that video, I loved it. And I think the Chair and I both agreed one of our happiest days of the year was the arts celebration at the holidays and seeing how our arts program has grown, particularly in our elementary schools, when we never used to have that. And all the... and all the different interpretations our various schools did. So teaching our students to enjoy and appreciate the arts. We were talking to the student from the Boston Arts Academy who won the scholarship earlier today. And here he plays the viola at Boston Arts Academy, but he's going to study finance. We were talking about working the left brain, right brain side, and that's the value of the arts education. So loved that day. I do want to ask one question, changing gears about the transformation work, because you particularly focused in on chronic absenteeism. And, you know, thinking about some of the other presentations that you've been digging in on, you know, we're really seeing the tie of chronic absenteeism and the impact on academic performance. And I think back to the example of, you know, we all get these letters in the mail of, well, you use 10% less electricity or 10% less natural gas than your neighbor. You're doing well. How do we help families understand the direct tie we can make between chronic absenteeism and academic performance? And the impact, how that happens year after year? It's so easy to think, I can miss this one day. I'm not feeling well. I have a sibling I have to take care of. I was up late last night. There were always, there were many reasons, and I'm fully understanding of that. But how do we understand, how help families understand the cumulative impact of, you know, one day, one day, one day, and all of a sudden it's impacting the academic performance?
Right. So I think it's, I think we know chronic absenteeism is just a really complex issue. I think, you know, we've done, we've had some real success. Not this microphone. There we go. We've had some real success with our Win the Day campaign, which has been really focused at our high schools, but then we extended it this year in going to the students themselves so that they could understand how important it was to be in school on a regular basis. And if they were not in school, what they needed to do, the steps they needed to take to make things up. I think at the elementary in the middle, we did, we did a campaign with the city on this that Rebecca Granger had, you know, was supporting to reach out to parents directly to help them understand that significance. But I think we have to also acknowledge that post-pandemic, families and students are struggling with more complex issues, that it isn't as simple as just telling everybody they need to be in school, that, you know, homelessness and food insecurity, job unemployment insecurity. Some of our students are financially contributing to their families and so feel that pressure point of work or are taking care of siblings where a parent works multiple jobs. So there's just a lot of that complexity. There's also a lot of deep mental health post-pandemic. And I think what we have learned is that chronic absenteeism is a symptom that we have to then look at and be able to go deeper, work with the family and the student to understand better what's going on to support. It's only going to be in that way that we, that we're able to get our students to be able to come back regularly when we help them solve some of those issues that are going on in their lives. So it is complex. I think our data is very promising. You know, we have, not only have we met our targets, but more importantly, we've seen good drops in points. And I also think at the high school level, for students who have given up and are chronically absent lots of days, this is part of the work in alternative ed redesign, to say what are those options for students so that they don't have to feel like they can't come to school or they have to drop out, but they actually have some meaningful options. So it is complex. We know that. And we're working on a variety of levels to do that, from messaging to helping actually dig into what the root causes are.
So that's helpful. And I, I agree it is, it's a symptom. And there are many, many issues that are involved in why a student ultimately ends up being chronically absent. It's just the impact is so great for them. Thank you also for arranging for us to visit transformation schools and to actually do the classroom observations. It was extraordinarily helpful to see the work that the transformation teams are doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Because we have a lot tonight. I'm not going to ask questions.
Yeah.
There's a lot anyway. So anyway, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing on the superintendent's report is approved. We will now move to the next report, the Student Activity Account Authorization. This item will be presented at this time and be brought forward for a vote during the action item portion of the meeting. I'd like to invite the superintendent to offer opening remarks.
I see that our CFO has beat me to the podium. But just in terms of this particular one, this is one of two votes that we actually asked for. This particular one is, is really just allowing the school committee to authorize our schools to continue to maintain their student activity accounts. And this was actually, we used to do it every other, every third year. And we've now since been advised that an annual practice of authorizing is a much healthier practice. So thus, we're bringing it to you each year. And CFO Bloom, does anything else?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Superintendent and members of the committee for taking this under consideration today. The memo you have and then has shared with the members of the public outlines our responsibilities as a district and your responsibilities as a committee to authorize student activity accounts. We also added some commitments from the superintendent and myself to this body to ensure that we are following best practice and are in alignment with the law. This vote allows our schools to continue doing important, but also small detailed day-to-day work that ensures that our students have access to field trips and events and other amazing activities. So I hope you'll vote yes on this item.
And now open it up to questions and comments. Thank you. We'll vote on this later in the evening. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to address the school committee on school-related issues. Questions on specific school matters are referred to the superintendent. Questions on policy matters may be discussed by the committee later. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 23 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Please feel free to email your comments for distribution to the committee. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please note, the comments of any public speaker do not represent the Boston Public Schools or the Boston School Committee. Please state your name, affiliation, and where you live before you begin. If you're on Zoom, please sign in using the name you register with for public comment and be ready to unmute and turn your camera on when it's your turn to speak. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. I will call the first group. The first speaker is Mina Yusuf, Hanan Yusuf, Ummal Khair, Salaah, and Safa Yusuf. Mina Yusuf?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee Members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Mina Husein Yusuf. I'm 11 years old. In the fifth grade, I attend Nathan Hale Elementary School, and I live in Roxbury. I'm here with the Eid Coalition Group to advocate about closing school on Eid because it's not fair to us Muslims that we have to miss a very important test or a class celebration. For example, this field day was scheduled on Eid and I had to go to my teacher's to change the day. I feel like, and I feel like it isn't fair that an 11-year-old has to advocate to a teacher so they could reschedule the day. Thank you, everyone, for your time and audience.
Thank you. Next speaker is Hanan Yusuf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee Members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Hanan Yusuf. I'm 15 years old. I go to John D. O'Brien, and I live in Roxbury, and I'm here with the Boston Eid Coalition to get Eid on the BPS calendar. Eid for me means coming together with loved ones and sharing meals. It's a day that strengthens family bonds and brings a sense of unity and joy. Having the day off, off school on Eid would make me feel more included and celebrate in school, and I wouldn't have to constantly worry about missing an important day or an important test or a field trip instead of spending time with my family. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ummal Khair Salaah.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee Members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Ummal Khair Salaah. I'm a Boston native from Dorchester and a rising junior at Boston Arts Academy. I'm joined here today with the Boston Eid Coalition. Our mission today is requesting the addition of both Eid holidays on the BPS academic calendar. Here in Boston, Muslim students, teachers, staff, and parents are an important part of the BPS community. Recognizing Eid as a holiday shows cultural respect and helps us feel truly included. Every year, it's stressful having to explain why I'm absent on Eid. I heard it all. We can't reschedule this test. Is it really that important, or can't you just skip it? This past Eid, instead of celebrating with my friends and family after prayer, I spent the morning constantly checking my phone, making sure I didn't miss the bus ticket to my final exam. This isn't, this isn't just my reality. It's the reality of countless Muslim students who are forced to choose between honoring our religious identity and maintaining academic success. We know the consequences of missing a day of school, coming back confused, trying to catch up, and risk falling behind. But it doesn't have to be this way. With your support, we can make our community more inclusive and welcoming space and powers our youth by helping younger students feel seen, easing stress for older students, and giving parents and guardians a peace of mind. This is a change you have the power to make. Thank you for your time and consideration. Supporting this change would not only benefit many students and families, but also show a commitment to respecting and valuing our diverse community.
Thank you. Next speaker is Safa Yusuf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee Members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Safa Husein Yusuf. I'm a Roxbury resident. I'm nine years old. I'm a third grader, and I go to Nathan Hale Elementary. And I am with the Boston Eid Coalition. If there was a school test on Eid, I have to pick the school test or Eid, my family or school. So if we, so if we had a day off, all Muslims would never have to pick Eid or going to school. So that is why school should be closed on Eid day. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Our next group of speakers is Ahmed Ismail, Saran, Sayad, Deidra Manning, and Hajja Savan. Ahmed Ismail, and if our interpreter, our Somali interpreter can come up to support.
First, thank you all. My name is Ahmed. I am a parent of one of Boston Public School students. My daughter's name?
Sarah Ahmed Ismail.
Sarah Ahmed Ismail.
Boston Latin Academy.
She goes to Boston Latin Academy. I'm here to request, as the students did, that my daughter needs to be off on Eid days to celebrate with her family. So I'm requesting that she didn't miss her classes for celebrating the Eid days, as well as taking part in the celebration with her family.
Ahmed sent you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Saran Sayad. And if we can have our Dari's interpreter coming up?
Hello, everybody. Eid, I'm requesting that Eid would be recognized as an official holiday. We have Eid and we have Ramadan. And I'm requesting that the school would give them time to celebrate it with the family. So they don't have to go to school. They don't have, they will have time to stay and celebrate it with the family. We also have Ramadan, that we celebrate Ramadan also. This is what I would like the committee, the chair, and everyone to consider. We'll be grateful for your consideration on this matter.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidra Manning.
Good evening. My name is Deidra Manning. I'm a resident of Dorchester and single parent and sole financial supporter of two public school children. I would like to talk to the school committee tonight, just giving a little bit of background, which I'm sure you've heard before. I started speaking before the school committee probably three and a half years ago, but for the last two years, it's been almost exclusively about the inequitable exam school policy. I participated in both retreats, one in the fall and one in the spring. And I would like to let people know that it's been very frustrating to have BPS fail both our family, my children, as well as the Henderson community, and listening over the past three years to many, many other people who have trouble with BPS. I would like to say that leadership is visiting a school slated for closure, not just carefully curated BPS Bright Spot events at schools. It involves doing your own research on school choice rather than following the recommendations of BPS administrators without providing information or options. Leadership is rolling up your sleeves, wanting to serve on a subcommittee. I was astounded when I was told three members of the public took advantage of an opportunity to speak at a retreat last fall. The school committee serves the community, not the superintendent. Public service should include an opportunity for meaningful public input. If there are school committees who limit or budget only 20 minutes for public comment, I suspect they oversee a well-run district. In my family, we stress the importance of inclusion. In my family, we stress the importance of inclusion, kindness, and service to others. I was not surprised when my eleven-year-old daughter said to me at the end of retreat, mommy, I can't believe how rude she was to you. Leadership is not demonizing members of the public who advocate for, among other priorities, their children, English language learners, and male students of color. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Haja Savan.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I had a thirteen-year-old that went to school in Newton, Mass. He's in middle school through Medco program. He loved this program very much. And then, um, like Eid Day, he has to go to school on Eid Day. So I woke him up at five AM because we have to be able to attend the six-thirty AM Eid that ended at seven-thirty. So it was, it was very difficult for me and him to go to school, for him to go to school, and at the same time to celebrate Eid with us, which he failed to do. So we end up, hello?
The second one.
Okay. Hello? So then, um, after the Eid, around seven-thirty, I have to drove him all the way to Newton to drop him off. He never got the opportunity to celebrate the, I mean, the breakfast and the dinner. He came home very, very late that day. He wasn't too happy about it because he loved to celebrate Eid with us, you know, with friends and family and the Muslim community. So really appreciate it if Eid Day can be a day off, you know, for, for the sake of our kids. And then, we really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Our next group is Sinab Youssef, Firdosa Hassan, Kadra Abdullahi, and Faiza Sharif. Sinab Youssef?
Sinab passes.
Okay. Firdosa Hassan?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, and the member of the committee. My name is Firdosa Hassan, and I am a proud Muslim mother of two children. My son recently graduated from Boston Public Schools and my daughter is currently a student in Boston Public School. I'm here to respectfully urge the committee to make Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Athha official school holidays for all Boston Public School students. For years, I've watched my children struggle with the painful decision to whether to attend a school or celebrate one of the most important days of our faith. Eid is not just a celebration. It's, uh, it's a deeply spiritual day that begins with prayers and continues with family reflection and giving back to our community. No child, no child should, uh, have to miss this sacred time because of school. When my, when my son was in school, he often left, uh, felt left out. He would either stay home and fall behind in class or go to school and feel like he was missing once, once a year moment with his family and community. Uh, now I'm watching my daughter face the same unfair burden and it breaks my heart. Boston is a city that embraces many cultures and communities, but when our holidays are not recognized, it sends a message that Muslim students are not fully part of the fabric of this district. That hurts. It's not just, uh, about missing a day. It's about feeling invisible, a system that's supposed to support all children. Other nearby towns like Brookline, Cambridge, and Milton have already recognized Eid as an official holiday. Why can't Boston do that? Uh, we are asking, we're not asking for a special treatment. We're asking for fairness, inclusion, and our children to fully practice their religion without having to choose between faith and education. This is about equity. It's about being seen. It's about doing the right thing for all families. I thank you for your time and consideration. I truly hope you will take this consideration. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kadra Abdullahi.
Good evening, School Committee and attendees. My name is Kadra Abdullahi, and I am a Roxbury resident and former BPS graduate. Thank you for allowing me to take this moment to tell you why having Eid as a BPS holiday is a great idea. I am testifying in support of the Boston Eid Coalition request to add the two Eid holidays to the BPS academic calendar. Boston students face many challenges when attending school, family dynamics, home life, and ongoing mental health issues. Attendance should not be one of those problems. Students and observants of Eid very much want to do both. They want to maintain their attendance, but they also want to honor their faith. We are asking with your help for an opportunity for students to do both. We are not asking for anything that is without precedent. Students are also able to observe Good Friday and many, many other religious holidays. Boston Public Schools by legal mandate makes it so that all students, regardless of race, creed, or religious orientation, ought to have a fair opportunity in observance to their holiday. Eid is one of our Muslim holidays that we are asking observance for, and it should not come at a detriment to our educational or spiritual lives. Students who are participating in Eid are having to choose between their education and their religion if they want to celebrate at any means necessary. The importance of missing a school day is missing important information that could end up on a big test, ruining your perfect attendance, which could end up in you not being awarded for your hard work. How would you feel if you or your kids had to choose whether you could see family, indulge in your religious beliefs, or going to school, learning new ideas, and furthering your education? Thank you for listening, and we'd like to know how we can work together in making this a reality and letting us know your opinions and thoughts. Thank you so much.
Faiza Sharif?
Um, good evening, Chair Robinson, School Committee members, and Superintendent Skipper. My name is Faiza Sharif. I'm a South End resident and BPS alum, and I'm a member of the Boston Aid Coalition. Uh, we were in this building nine days ago for an Eid celebration hosted by the city of Boston. Uh, we asked students as young as six to sixteen what being, what school being closed for Eid would mean to them. Their eyes lit up as they spoke about feeling included, uh, about getting to spend time with loved ones and feeling respected. Uh, they also spoke about their current reality of missed academic opportunities and enrichment activities. This is a longstanding issue of access and opportunity. It's an issue of attendance that the Superintendent stressed in her report tonight as a concern for BPS. And that Vice Chair O'Neill just spoke about the impact of even one day missed. It's also an issue of labor as the work of supporting these students falls to teachers and staff members who are already stretched thin, like Minna's teacher at the Nathan Hale, uh, which this year, uh, had to reschedule Field Day because it coincided with Eid. It's tempting as policymakers to cling to a scarcity mindset and fear the consequences of a new change. But we also know that the status quo is currently untenable, and Boston is not the first district to confront this issue. In addition to the students and parents and community leaders who are attending tonight's meeting, we've submitted an open letter and a petition of nearly three hundred and fifty Boston residents. Fifty-five percent of those are parents and students of BPS.
Thirty seconds.
Who are in support of a change. We want to work with BPS on a policy which will meet the, which will meet the needs of our families. Um, we look forward to continuing this dialogue at next month's school committee meeting. Um, and this is not part of my testimony, but on a personal note, I just want to congratulate, uh, Member Lima Barbosa for all of her commitment to this committee, and I just want to stress that her voice is really going to be, uh, missed on this committee. Um, and we really support everything that she's done for the city of Boston. Thank you.
Our next group of speakers is Carolyn Kane, Joseph Dickens, and Mary McLennan.
Carolyn Kane. Good evening, uh, good evening, Chair Robinson, Vice Chair O'Neill, Superintendent Skipper, and other members of the school committee. I am here tonight to elucidate the repeated failures of the district regarding the Dr. Henderson Inclusion School. The school has gone from a shining star, an internationally recognized inclusion program to a school where staff and students are leaving in droves because the district has not provided the necessary leadership, oversight, and accountability to maintain its history as a Level Four academic achievement school that was highly sought after by families throughout BPS for decades. For those members who do not know me, my name is Carolyn Kane. I was the Boston, I was the Chair of Boston Sped PAC for eleven years, spanning the terms of five superintendents. I was also a parent leader at the Henderson during my own daughter's nineteen years at the Henderson. I, along with many parents, advocated for the expansion of the Henderson from a K to five to K to twenty-two school. At the time, there was no full inclusion school that served students with intellectual disabilities. I was on the committee that developed the innovation plan that was approved by the school committee in two thousand and thirteen. Twelve years later, the school is circling the drain and the district is not doing anything to change that. When the school committee did expand the school, it did it one year at a time. Ninth grade, one year, tenth grade, the next, and no family wanted to choose that school because there were not four years available to high school students. Fast forward to November third, twenty twenty-one, when the principal was viciously attacked after repeated attempts from the district for more support. All of her requests for help had gone unanswered. Sadly, the support for, for the district, for Mrs. Lampron and the school continued after the attack. The district did not reach out to Mrs. Lampron to check on her recovery after the attack, despite her exemplary service to the Boston Public Schools, and the school was left without a permanent leader for the next three years. This year, a new leader was finally installed at the Henderson. I heard you, ma'am. After this person was hired and prior to the beginning of the school year, I offered to meet with her and provide my, my support. That meeting never occurred and was obviously never welcomed.
Thank you very much.
Throughout this year, I have been reporting concerns concerning me and the admin, concerning, shared with, I've shared them with the administration.
Kane, could you please give us your testimony in writing because we're, we're trying to be fair and equitable to all members?
I understand that.
So can you please, I know you have your written.
There are a number of different issues that have been raised that have not been addressed, and it's disgraceful that this school is in such shape that it is. I advocated it for years. I am heartbroken and I am disgusted.
Our next group of speakers is Joseph Dickens and then Mary McLennan.
Bismillah. Uh, thank you, uh, this, uh, Madam Superintendent and Chair, uh, taking this time and to listen, uh, to these issues. I wanted to advocate for the community, uh, when it comes to the Eid prayers. You know, just not growing up Muslim and, and, and enjoying that journey over the last twelve years or so. Yeah, I see the importance of it. And then seeing the struggles, as you see the, the sisters that are in the school and the mothers, the fathers that are advocating for it. And just that growing, uh, strength and, and importance is, is from day one, from when being alone and kind of just new to the religion, to now grown, uh, family of three, uh, uh, girls, myself. I think it'd be very important, um, if you took that, took that initiative, uh, to listen to these concerns and really consider it because, uh, it's a time of family, it's a time, it's a time of worship, and it's a time of reflection and being with family and then, and them not having to go through the struggles that they have to, uh, you know, on a daily basis. And just an identity of the Muslim or, uh, in the public school and the struggle that may, uh, may occur. But having this, this, what may seem like a small thing, uh, would really empower them and, and help them and, and just like, like the, um, Vice Jim, uh, Vice Champ person said as well, Mr. O'Neill, you know, just that time off, that one, you know.
Thirty seconds.
Life's, you know, life happens and, uh, so just having that support to, to really just embrace that and, and like you said, other, other communities around have done it. So I don't think it would be, uh, you know, controversial and actually be, uh, really beneficial for everybody to, you know, uh, add to that inclusion that sounds like you want to strive for. Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker is Mary McLennan.
Good evening. My name is Mary McLennan, and I'm the mother of Frankie McLennan, first grader at the Henderson Lower School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to share serious concerns about Boston Public Schools' violations of special education law and the inequitable, inconsistent process surrounding my son's IEP placement. Frankie has autism and has been at the Henderson School for five years. After a recent neuropsych evaluation and classroom observation, our IEP team unanimously agreed that he requires a small, structured, sub-separate classroom with peers who share his learning profile free of major behavioral disruptions. He also needs inclusion opportunities and support grounded in the principles of ABA, not in ABA strange, which would actually increase his anxiety and hinder his progress. With the district's approval, I toured three schools. Only the Elliott School had the right environment, academically focused, calm, structured, and aligned with Frankie's IEP. The IEP team formally agreed to request a seat at the Elliott. Minutes later, that decision was overruled by an administrator who wasn't invited to the meeting. I did not give consent and had not participated in any of the team's discussions. She, I was told to go to the Welcome Center, which contradicts the placement process for IEPs. When asked for a policy supporting her decision, she admitted that there wasn't one. Instead, I was told to go to mediation or to apply through the Welcome Center. This Assistant Direct, this A.D. also made inappropriate and unprofessional comments to my advocate who was attending in good faith to support me. Her conduct shifted the tone of the meeting away from student-centered collaboration to administrative obstruction. This isn't just frustrating, it's a violation of the Massachusetts Special Education Law, which clearly states that IEP placements must be based on a student's needs and not schooled, school zones. I would also like to point out that a comment was made to me during this process that, um, school placements cannot be based off personal preference. I find this comment very offensive and want to be clear that my decisions on my son are not on preference. They are based on professional recommendations, um, of educators, clinicians, and careful observations. It's my top priority that his well-being is ensuring, is ensuring he receives the needs to thrive. In closing. In closing, I request that the team's decision to place Frankie at the Elliott School be honored, that BPS provide written clarification of its policies and procedures for IEP placement as this policy reference completely violates the special education law.
We will now transition to Zoom testimonies. The first speaker is Carol Garcia.
Good evening. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee members, Superintendent Skipper. My name is Carol Garcia. I'm a Dorchester resident and a parent of a tenth grader at the Henderson Inclusion School. My daughter Amelia has a history of twenty-two Q point eleven micro duplication syndrome. She carries a mild intellectual disability along with a generalized anxiety disorder. Amelia began at the Henderson right out of early intervention at three years old. This has been the only school that she knows. The Henderson School was built on family involvement because so many families believed in the mission of the school and wanted it to be successful. There were events like school carnivals, Family Posta Night, International Night, and our biggest event, the Henderson Gala. These events and fundraisers were not possible without family involvement, and our family was very involved. At one point, all three of my kids were students there. When I moved my youngest to private school, I was told what a great loss it was as she was a model student for her special education peers. The model and the vision that was the Henderson where students like my daughter Amelia were to learn alongside their general education peers like my daughter Meredith. It is so sad that the vision and mission of the school is gone. Our family is well aware of the violence that continue go to, that continues to go on in the school and most recently outside involving parents. We are also aware of the amount of fantastic teachers the school is losing. I'm not sure who the new demographic of students is or looks like that Principal Wiggins references in her newsletter. The school we knew were students with and without disabilities, learning together to make inclusion possible for all. Over our time at the Henderson, my daughter Amelia has developed a generalized anxiety disorder resulting from the chaos and violence that takes place in, in the classrooms, hallways, and lunchrooms in the school.
Our next speaker, Nawal Sahel is not in the meeting, so I will ask for Jan Mad. Our next speaker, Nawal Sahel, is not in the meeting, so I will ask for John Mudd. Mr. Mudd, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, my name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and have a grandson at the John F. Kennedy Elementary School. The School Committee retreat on May twenty-eighth established three subcommittees called Priority Working Groups, composed of school committee members and BPS staff, to meet during the summer to probe deeply into the critical student outcome issues focused on equitable education, inclusive education, and the long-term facilities plan. Creating a subcommittee structure to analyze BPS strategies and challenges could be an important step in making key recommendations for changes in policies, practices, and accountability for BPS to improve student outcomes. But I would suggest there's a major gap in the proposed structure. The working groups include only committee members and BPS staff. There is no provision for introducing new thinking into the district education system that is not producing the kind of progress in improving student outcomes that all of us would want and should expect. There are no new education experts involved. There is no provision for participation by public stakeholders. The creation of working groups could provide the structure to move in this direction of expanding the conversation. Why do you want to just talk among yourselves behind closed doors? Invite some public participants to join the working group meetings over the summer or at least make the meetings open to the public or ask experts and advocates, parents and others to suggest questions and recommendations. And at minimum, ensure every work group looks at its issues, recommendations, through the lens of eliminating and the goal of eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps. We need change. Open up the discussion and dialogue. Don't lose this opportunity. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mike Heisman.
I was having technical issues with my Zoom. Lena, thank you once again. You're wonderful for your assistance. More important than education, our children and their families need to be safe. What is the BPS doing to take care of our Palestinian children who are dealing with genocide? I stand, I fully support the demands of the Muslim community made at this meeting. What are we doing to care for our immigrant children? Many are afraid to travel to and from school. Another school year is coming to an end. The school year runs together in my mind, so these evaluation remarks go back to the beginning of the Wu-Schipper regime. There has never been enough resources to provide a quality education for all of our children. This tradition unfortunately has continued. Under the previous leadership of Dr. Cilless and her chief assistant, Dr. Charles Grandson, equity had been a major priority. The ratio equity tool was created and used. Community Equity Roundtable Discussions were held on a regular basis. More Black and Brown children were admitted to our exam schools. Under the misleadership of Superintendent Skipper, this progress has been erased and the system is energetically marching in the opposite direction. Immediately after Ms. Skipper had been hired, Black and Brown Central Office leaders removed, Dr. Grandson and many others were fired despite significant efforts to support. More Black and Brown teachers have left the system than they have been recruited. The ratio equity tool has become invisible. Community Equity Roundtable Discussions ended. Wu-Schipper attempted to bulldoze the removal of the O'Brien Exam School from Roxbury to White West Roxbury. Our unhealthy, unsafe, and out-of-date schools are decaying at a much faster rate than the modernization of our facilities. Schools are closed and school committees.
Mr. Heisman, your time is up.
... Black and Brown children.
Our next group of speakers is Cheryl Buckman, Marianne Sharif, Anise Abdul, and Hava Yusuf. Cheryl Buckman.
My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a former Dever alum, current current Dever parent, and proud lead spokesperson for the Save the Dever movement. Tonight, I stand before you not only to acknowledge the closure of a school, but to reflect on the profound legacy of the Pauley Devers that the Pauley Dever leaves behind and to speak to what this decision truly means for our community. While this while the closure is now a reality, it is essential that we recognize the unwavering efforts of its educators, staff, students, parents, and supporters. Their dedication throughout this incredibly difficult time deserves acknowledgement, respect, and remembrance. For months, our community fought to protect something irreplaceable. We organized rallies, we spoke at school committee meetings like this one, and we shared our stories with the media and the public. The commitment of the Dever community was powerful and transformative. We showed the city what it truly means when a school becomes more than just a building, it becomes a family. Dever was built on two pillars, community and family. These weren't just words, they were values we lived every single day. They shaped a school culture where every student felt seen, supported, and empowered. The spirit was and still is the heartbeat of the Dever. As we move forward, I urge the school committee and the city council to honor the Dever's legacy, not in words, but in meaningful action. Let the values we upheld, unity, inclusion, resilience, become the compass guiding the Boston Public's future. Through, though the Dever may be closing, its spirit lives on in every student, every teacher, every family member who walk the halls, and the spirit cannot be closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Marianne Sharif, is not signed into the meeting, so we will go with Anise Abdul.
Good evening, members of the School Committee Superintendent and Chair. My name is Anise Abdul. I am from Roxbury. I am a BPS parent and also a former BPS graduate myself, and I'm here to urge the Boston Public School School Committee to formally designate Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Athha, the two major Islamic holidays in the year, as official BPS school holidays. As has been mentioned already by students and by families as well, for thousands of Muslim students and families across the city, these are two Ides that are most sacred days in the year, a time we all come together to celebrate and join together as a community. Year after year, we have issues where Muslim students and families are faced with the difficult decision to either miss a school day, a day of learning, or miss a day of family and celebration and faith. I don't think this is a choice any student or family should be forced to make, so recognizing Eid as holidays would send a very strong message that BPS, our district, values and respects the diversity of our student body, just as we honor other faith traditions. Designating Eid holidays affirms that our Muslim students belong, that their faith and traditions matter, and that our district, BPS, reflects the people of Boston. I also want to note, as has been noted, that this is not something that is not done anywhere else. This is something that is recognized as a holiday in Brookline, Cambridge, Milton, Wellesley as an example. So as a parent, as a former BPS product myself, I respectfully respectfully urge the committee to designate Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Athha as official school holidays in the Boston Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Hava Yusuf, is not in the Zoom meeting. No? So, and Marianne Sharif is not here? Okay, so Chair, then we, and public comments.
Okay, thank you very much, and I want to thank everyone who spoke this evening. Your comments are very important to us. Earlier in this evening, we recognized BSAC members and our own Mr. Ishmael was not amongst us, and tonight is Mr. Ishmael's final meeting as our student representative. He's already graduated and as you can see, is off already getting ready for MIT. Omar, it's been a true pleasure working with you. You've asked thoughtful questions, and I really appreciate the insight and perspective you've brought to this table. We're immensely proud of all you've accomplished and excited to see where your journey will take you. And at this time, I'd like to invite Superintendent to share a few remarks.
We're going to miss you very much, but you have made BPS proud, you made us proud. Really did appreciate just, you're very thoughtful and you are so good at making sure that we stay focused on student voice. So thank you for your service. You're gonna rock MIT and just enjoy all of it.
Like to give other members a moment.
Thank you. Good luck. I can't wait, you future, because you're the best.
Mr. Ishmael, we're honoring you, I assume? Thank you. I apologize after to step up for a minute, but I'm delighted to do that. I've said this before, you've been a great voice to this committee. As a fellow member, you've been very, very thoughtful in your comments. I am so excited about your next step. I'm so sorry Boston College didn't have an engineering program that would interest you, but you know, MIT's a good choice, so congratulations. Go make us proud. I have no doubt you will.
I'm gonna echo what everybody said, and I'm glad that I get to graduate with you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all for your kind words, and I really enjoyed my experience in the School Committee, and it's definitely gonna remember it for the rest of my life and carry the lessons that I had that I had here with me. All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks. Okay. Our first action item this evening is the Grants for Approval totaling $3,559,303. Now I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent for any final comments.
Wonderful, thank you, Chair. There are ten grants for your consideration tonight, totaling more than $3.55 million. The two largest grants will fund schoolyard renovations. The first is the 1.86 million Homes Innovation Yard Phase Two, which will serve 283 students and include new playground equipment, safety surfacing, an adult fitness structure, and a multi-sport court. The second is the nearly $983,000 Hurley K-8 Playground Grant, which will support the rehabilitation of the Hurley Schoolyard into a safe, age-appropriate, and inclusive play space. The remaining eight grants total a little more than $709,000 and will fund a variety of services, and those are in your packet. So, and to just give the public a sense, the grants are supporting academically enriching out-of-school time programming at four schools, health and wellness for students, staff, and community, the continued IEP process rolled out that was started last year, equitable literacy and a redesign of the LA curriculum at the Dever School, community engagement in STEM for 600 students at 10 schools, summer meals access for 20,000 students, and supporting Mildred Av and Melvin H. King School students and educators with an investigating history, geography, and ancient civilization curriculum, just as an example of the flavor of the grants. We also have CFO Bloom. Were there to be any specific questions on the grants?
Now open it up. Any questions? Okay. There's no further discussion. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Our next vote is the fiscal year 2026 interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. I will now invite the Superintendent to offer comments.
Certainly, Chair. So tonight, we'll be asking the School Committee to take two votes on additional topics. One is the FY26 interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds, and the second is what you heard earlier about the student activity authorization. School committee members received memos on each of these topics in packet. First, each year, the School Committee authorizes the district to make interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds while we're awaiting the formal award. This allows us to hire staff to start at the beginning of the year without any disruptions. Second, we are asking the School Committee to authorize our schools to continue to maintain their student activity accounts. The committee authorized this several years ago, and as I indicated earlier, we've been advised to move to an annual authorization. This allows schools to collect fees for things like field trips and school events and so forth. Chief Bloom is here again. Were there to be any questions? But we would ask an affirmative vote for both of these items.
Any questions?
It's separate votes, though, right?
Yes, two separate votes. Two separate votes. Okay. There's nothing further. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The...
Thank you.
The motion is approved.
Our next action item is student activity authorization. That was presented at the beginning of the meeting. I will now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. We've all had lots of conversations. There's nothing further. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the student activity authorization as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next vote is the Superintendent Approval Authority over school trust expenditures. As you may recall, the committee voted at the May fourteenth meeting to authorize to load trust funds into school budgets. Tonight, we'll be voting on the Superintendent Authority to approve trust payments. I will now invite the Superintendent to offer comment.
Wonderful, thank you, Chair. So the city and its schools are the beneficiaries of several small trust funds. A trust is a dedicated fund set up for a stated purpose by a donor. These trusts generate income that is spent on the purpose set by the donor. The School Committee is the Board of Trustees for school trust funds. We are asking the School Committee to vote to give the Superintendent, myself, the authority to approve trust payments. The city's Trust Office and the BPS Finance Department are working with me to implement a series of clarifications and improvements to make it easier for schools to access their funds. The School Committee plays an important role in these improvements by empowering me to implement expenditures consistent with the purpose of the funds. Again, Chief Bloom is here to answer any outstanding questions.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, I have more of a comment, and this is both for Chief Bloom and the Superintendent. The last point, the student activity authorization and this one, the approval of school trust expenditures, these are great examples of just tiny little things that could trip us up in the public's eye, in the community's eye, that there's not trust that we're keeping an eye on things and doing things right. And specifically, I think the student activity authorization has been a source of issues in past years, so I'm really delighted to see that we're doing that work, that you involved others, you looked at it, you put together a policy that included making sure the city auditor looks at it as well. And I just want to express appreciation for the fact that we're doing both of these, which are new for the committee for the first time, but it's an example of, you know, just the tiny little minutia work, but all of these add up to improvements in the financial condition of the district, which is important for the residents and the city's taxpayers to know. So thank you, Chief Bloom, and thank you, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Okay. There is no further discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Superintendent Approval Authority over school trust expenditures.
are new for the committee for the first time, but it's an example of, you know, just the tiny little minutia work, but all of these add up to improvements in the financial condition of the district, which is important for the residents and the city's taxpayers to know. So thank you, Chief Bloom, and thank you Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Any, any questions? Okay. There is no further discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Superintendent Approval Authority over School Trust Expenditures as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins, Ms. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next action item is a Charter Renewal Request for Boston Green Academy, a Horace Mann Indistrict Charter School. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Boston Green Academy Headmaster Matt Holzer and Alex Chu, Chair of BGA's Board of Trustees, presented an overview of BGA's Charter Renewal Application. I will now invite the Superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you Chair. Boston Green Academy School Leader Matt Holzer is here tonight. As you recall, he joined us at the last school committee meeting and presented the school's charter renewal application. As an indistrict charter school, BGA must seek school committee approval of its application for charter renewal. This is the school's fourth five-year charter renewal. BGA has already received the approval of the BGA Board of Trustees and recently the unanimous support of the Boston Teachers Union vote on June 11th. Serving a student population that mirrors our district, BGA's curriculum is focused on sustainability and preparing students to study and work in fields related to climate, climate resiliency. I'm incredibly proud, as I think I said, of the progress that BGA has made, especially under Matt's leadership, and you can see this both in, in the outcomes of the school but also in its extensive waitlist. So tonight, I'm asking that the school committee approve this re-charter and bless Matt and BGA on its way to its fifth.
I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions or comments.
I'll just quickly, I want to thank Mr. Holzer and his board chair, who I don't see tonight, Mr. Chu, for the willingness of, of the Green Academy Board and school leadership to work with the districts on, on issues of commonality. You have shown that repeated, repeatedly over the years, and as the Superintendent said, the progress that we see at the school, the waitlist, and quite frankly, the culture that comes across, like just at your graduation last week, with all of your teachers presenting awards to the students, and you really get a sense how the culture has permeated through to your graduates. So a congratulation on what's going on at Green Academy.
Thank you. Congratulations. Lima?
All right.
There's no, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Boston Green Academy's Horace Mann Indistrict Charter School Renewal Application for the period 2026 to 2031 as recommended by the Superintendent. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Our next item, action item is a vote on the private school application for Urban Achievers High School. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Assistant Superintendent of Autonomous Schools Pauline Lugera White and Urban Achievers Founder Lino Sanchez presented an overview of the Urban Achievers High School application to open a private school in Roxbury, serving students beginning in school year 2526. Massachusetts General Law requires that private schools wishing to open must first receive approval from their local school committee. We have, we have, we take action based on the Superintendent's staff's review and recommendation. I will now invite the Superintendent to offer any final comments.
I would just say that I'm fully supportive, as is my team, of Urban Achievers School receiving an affirmative vote tonight. I think Lino and his, his fellow leaders in the school have demonstrated that they are ready for this next step, and I think it'll be a very good thing for the students in Boston.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee.
Yo tengo comentarios. Thank you Madam Chair. Quiero decirle al señor Lino y a su equipo que gracias por traer esto a Boston. Gracias por su dedicación. Gracias por no cansarse de luchar.
I want to say thank you to Lino and his team for bringing these to Boston and for your perseverance.
Es inspirador. Y sé que luchaste mucho, que tuvo que esperar mucho tiempo, pero podemos decir que lo has logrado. Te deseo mucha suerte y aquí tienes, este nos tienes a nosotros para apoyarte.
This journey has been truly inspiring, and I know you had to wait a lot, but I wish you good luck and you have us here to support you.
Good luck.
I, I just want to say I really appreciate the work that Lino and, and the entire team has done. To see that when the BPS first went out and visited, they were unsure, and that you dug down and worked harder and met the concerns that were raised and went deeper about the financial plan, et cetera, and, and to hear the testimony at our last meeting, and you said, no, you weren't gonna get emotional tonight, so I'm watching you now. It's, you know, it, it's a little bittersweet because, you know, you may be attracting some students that would love to have in Boston public schools, but you're touching their heart and you're, and you're meeting them where they want to be met, and we can learn from that as well. So I will be supporting the proposal this evening on the Superintendent's recommendation and look forward to see what happens with the school, and, and would love to come out and see it at some point when you're up and running. Thank you.
Yeah. I join the Vice Chair and the rest of the committee in congratulating you on getting this far, and particularly excited for our student athletes who need a different kind of environment to both balance their academic prowess and excitement with academics as well, and look forward to being able to come and visit with you in the near future as well. Okay, if there's nothing further, I will now entertain a motion to approve, oh, sorry, wrong one. All right. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Urban Achievers High School as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Sorry about that. Our next action item is the Approval of the Graduation Requirements Amendment. You may recall that this recommendation was presented to the committee at our last meeting. I will now invite the Superintendent to offer any final comments.
Thank you Chair. So we are asking tonight for two separate votes. First, we are asking for approval of an amendment to the graduation requirements for students attending alternative education schools that would give them an attainable yet rigorous graduation goal. As you know, four years ago, this body voted to adopt the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Mass Core Framework as the graduation requirement for all BPS students. Since then, the district has been implementing that change. Mass Core establishes standardized, standardized graduation requirements across all schools. This decision is grounded in creating a high-quality academic experience for all of our students. Secondly, we are also asking for the school committee to extend the currently approved competency determination process for the class of 2026. This vote will allow us to ensure students in the class of 2026 are enrolled in appropriate coursework to meet the competency determination while we await the outcome of the Governor's statewide K-12 Graduation Council. Chief of Teaching and Learning Leslie Miller and Ted Lombardi, Secondary Superintendent for College Career and Life Readiness, are also here were you to have any additional questions. I would again ask for an affirmative vote for both of these motions.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Done. Okay. If there's nothing further, I will now entertain a motion to approve the Graduation Requirement Amendment as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Our final vote tonight is the Competency Determination for the Class of 2026. That was presented during the Graduation Requirement Amendment report during our last meeting. I'll now open up, I'll now invite the Superintendent to offer any final comments.
Just combined the two chairs, so I think this, we would also ask for an affirmative.
Okay. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Okay, I just have one, and we just talked about, I know that particularly for the alternative schools, the issue particularly around world language not being able to happen because of other places. And so one of the concerns that I had was that if there were a student that wanted world language, is it possible through other mechanisms to make sure that students can get that, knowing that sometimes kids move from one school and we're doing that? Not that, it just would just rule them completely out, but there could be.
Yeah. It could be an accommodation, so the, the answer in short is yes, but I know that Mr. Lombardi is waiting for this question.
I'm here for it. Thank you Chair. Great question. Yeah, I think we addressed this a little bit the last time, but to, to take it a little bit further, we have, so part of the issue with offering world language in the alternative ed is that offering the breadth of world languages that are offered across our mainstream high schools is just not possible in these small schools. We do have through Edmentum and other means, some online capability though, to do some, to do some language work, and, and those are actually areas we've tried to explore a little bit more to broaden what options are there. But, but currently, Edmentum does offer a suite of world language classes that particularly if students are, you know, one course into a two-course path, that they can finish it that way.
Great. That was, that was the question. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the Competency Determination for the Class of 2026 as presented. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravex, will you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair. Dr. Alkins, Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will transition to the reports. Our first report is the Superintendent's School Year Summit of 2024-2025 Evaluation. Evaluating the Superintendent is amongst the chief responsibilities of the school committee. The Superintendent completed her self-evaluation and shared it with the committee for review. Each committee member finalized their individual evaluations, providing their insights and assessments of the Superintendent's performance. Dr. Alkins led the process this year and consolidated our feedback into a comprehensive summative evaluation, which will be presented this evening. We will vote on the Superintendent's evaluation at our special meeting on July 9th. As you can see, Dr. Alkins is unable to join us in person tonight. Vice Chair O'Neil, who has co-led the process in the past, has graciously agreed to step in to present the Superintendent's summative evaluation. I will now turn it over to the Superintendent for remarks, followed by Vice Chair O'Neil. After the presentation, I will open it up to other members for comments on the Superintendent's evaluation. I'd like to remind the Superintendent and Vice Chair to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters, and now I invite the Superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you Chair. So, and thank you to the committee members. I am truly grateful for this opportunity to reflect on my work as Superintendent over the past three years and the progress we are making as a district. I want to thank Chair Robinson, Vice Chair O'Neil, and each of you as members for your continued support and direction that you've given to me as I begin the fourth year of my superintendency. I also want to give a special thanks to school committee member, Dr. Alkins, for his work during the evaluation process. I'm grateful for the collaboration of this body, and your questions and your guidance make me a more effective leader. Leading this district is truly the pinnacle of my career, and it's more importantly, the honor of a lifetime. I begin work each day with the same excitement and enthusiasm that I did on my first day, and I hope that that is true my last day of the superintendency. I'm surrounded by an incredible team of extraordinary talent, some of whom are here tonight, others of whom are not, but I'm just, I'm proud of what we have collectively achieved over the past three years, and every day, more importantly, I'm just really blessed to call them my colleagues. When I came back to the district in 2022, it was a period of great transition here at the BPS and at the city level. We've continued to focus on building a strong and stable district that is now ready to reach new levels of growth and achievement. And although we find ourselves challenged, again, this time by policy changes at the federal level and difficult funding decisions, we are more determined than ever to ensure that the foundation we've created stays strong. The steady and passionate leadership of Mayor Wu and other civic leaders inspires me and all of us to work even harder. As we near the end of the 2024-2025 school year, we're also nearing the end of our systemic improvement plan, or our SIP. This marks a major milestone in the district's improvement and stabilization efforts. There is certainly much work left to be done, but this accomplishment is a testament to the systems and structures that my team has implemented in partnership with DESI, and we're ready for that work ahead. As in previous years, I focused my self-evaluation on the feedback that was shared at the end of last year by this committee, and I've continued to do my best to align that feedback with the goals of this committee, our district priorities, the expertise of our team, and the standards for Superintendent evaluations set forth by DESI. In my evaluation, I provided you with many data points, lots of exemplars of the district's progress, too many to certainly name here, that correspond to our performance goals. They show we continue to move in the right direction. And though I'd love to go through every detail tonight, I know the agenda is packed, so I'm gonna try to keep it brief, but I do want to take a few minutes to review some key improvements because they represent the hard work of our team. On the academic side, we have effectively built the foundation for improved academic achievement and developed a clear set of academic strategies after years of inconsistent leadership. To start, BPS has made significant strides in preparing our students for college and career. We prioritize pathways at all BPS high schools, bringing the total number of college pathways to 15 across state schools. We completed the process to ensure all schools use high-quality instructional materials. 100% of our schools are using these materials, with 85% of schools adopting district-supported high-quality instructional materials, and 15% of the schools using materials approved by Teaching and Learning that meet that high standard. We focused on our multi-tiered system of support, or what we call MTSS, over the past two years, working on strengthening Tier 1 instruction for all students, with our focus tuning to the implementation and documentation of intensifying Tier 1. And we continue to improve the connection between the central office and the schools through the regional model. As we move forward with our inclusive education plan, Boston is becoming a district where students learn in the least restrictive environment. Just a few highlights. Reach an agreement with the BTU for 2024-27 Collective Bargaining Agreement, which is redefining what inclusive practice looks like in the classroom. Opening six programs in 2425 with capacity to serve more than 300 students. which is redefining what inclusive practice looks like in the classroom. Opening six programs in 2425 with capacity to serve more than 300 students and launching nine new programs in school year 2526 with the capacity to serve more than 200 students in the first year of implementation and over 1,000 students when fully implemented. Operational improvements: ensuring all students have the physical spaces to support every aspect of their education. We needed to make and continue to make operational improvements. This includes implementing our long-term facilities planning work and optimizing our footprint by continuing to merge schools and right-size the district. This year, we opened the new Quincy Upper School and newly renovated building for the Horace Mann School for the deaf and hard of hearing. We advanced in the MSBA process for new and renovated buildings for the Sarah Roberts School and the Ruth Batson Academy, and completed an application for the renovation of Madison Park. In the fall, we'll look forward to opening the new Carter School, the renovated Sarah Roberts Elementary School, and the renovated and expanded PJ Kennedy School. In April of 2025, we released a report on BPS transportation that highlights progress in key areas. We also implemented other changes that have led to a better experience for students and families. We instituted the Zoom app, which has contributed to on-time performance improvements. We implemented a new ridership policy, a procedure, that ensures only students who use the bus are routed for transportation. Eight hundred students who have consistently not been riding the bus this school year were opted out of transportation. And we are continuing to move forward with fleet electrification with a goal of being fully electric by 2030. Families are our greatest partners in this work, and so we continue to strengthen our connections to parents and caregivers in various ways. We reorganized the Office of Family and Community Advancement. We hired more staff with linguistic capacity to best serve our multilingual families. We empowered families to advocate for their students by getting involved in their school site councils, which have grown from 30% of our schools just two years ago to 110 schools today. We built a team of seven BPS helpline specialists who have handled more than 32,000 cases so far this year. And that's up from even last year, which was our historic high. And we've implemented innovative programs like parent mentoring that we know make a key difference in our schools. There's so much more I could talk about, literally could go on and on because the work of the team is very powerful and transformative. As it closed the 2024 evaluation process, I, I said in the next year we'd focus and, and I explained how we would: center the identities of children to cultivate a sense of belonging in their schools, shift our practice so that children would learn in the least restrictive environment, expand native language supports and access to native language instruction, and provide the tools and professional development for our teachers and staff to do their best work. And this came from our committee, from you. These are the things that we centered upon. I believe we've made significant progress over the past year in demonstrating how we would meet and will continue to meet these goals. The operational and academic shifts that we have made have set the foundation for future growth and achievement. I certainly do not do this work alone. I really want to thank my whole team for their hard work and commitment to the students of Boston because they are our greatest asset. And I look forward to the work ahead in my fourth year and to the continued partnership of the committee. So with that, Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair. So fellow members, Dr. Alkins is, you can see he's not here tonight. He planned upon making this presentation because he has led this process since the chair asked him to earlier this year. However, his employer asked him on short notice to attend the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine Convocation on the Status of Informal Science and Engineering Education to engage in critical discourse about the future of STEM education in the U.S. So the chair asked that I step forward in his absence to share tonight's presentation due to my past partnership in the superintendent's evaluation process. As Chair Robinson shared, Dr. Alkins led this process from start to finish. You know I am never shy about expressing my opinions or thoughts or comments, but tonight there'll be none of that because I am strictly reading Dr. Alkins' written words from here forward. Because he, he did the presentation, wrote the summative evaluation. Each of us did seven individual evaluations. He collected them, wrote the summative evaluation, and wrote the talking points. It's from here on in strictly his words. So as the governing body of the Boston Public Schools, the Boston School Committee is responsible for, one, defining the vision, mission, and goals of the Boston Public Schools; two, establishing and monitoring the annual operating budget; three, setting and reviewing district policies and practices to support student achievement; and four, and most importantly for tonight, hiring, managing, and evaluating the superintendent. So the superintendent's evaluation process includes multiple key components. There were agreed-upon goals, co-developed and negotiated with the school committee and superintendent and driven by community input; self-evaluation of the superintendent highlighting process towards those, progress towards those goals; individual school committee member evaluations providing strengths, areas for growth, and reflections on progress; a summative evaluation that ties together salient themes across all individual member evaluations; and an eventual vote to approve the summative evaluation and official performance rating of the superintendent for the current academic year. Now, BPS has adopted DESI's Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's rubric to conduct the superintendent's evaluation across four standards. One, instructional leadership. Two, management and operations. Three, family and community engagement. And four, professional culture. Further, we have aligned DESI's four-category evaluation rating system with the BPS's more nuanced five-category rating system by subdividing the DESI proficiency rating into developing and effective. This will appear later in the presentation with more context. As a reminder, as a body, we revisit our school committee priorities at our annual retreat to ensure alignment with vision, goals, and actionable steps to achieve these goals. As such, the three priority areas are as follows. Priority one: accelerating academic performance as assessed by progress developing high-quality academic experiences, making strides in equitable literacy, and implementing high-quality instructional materials. Priority two: ensuring access for all students as assessed by progress on serving our diverse population of learners across a range of experiences and backgrounds, including socioeconomic status, race and ethnicity, geography, and language. Further, we prioritize progress in advancing inclusive education, particularly in the expansive experiences to support our multilingual learner and multilingual learner with disabilities populations, dual-language, transitional bilingual education, students with limited or interrupted formal education, and newcomers. Priority three: maintaining consistency and high-quality learning opportunities as measured through the implementation of a long-term facilities plan and access for every student to a high-quality student experience, defined by rigorous and culturally-affirming learning experiences, wellness and enrichment, supportive network of caring adults, and physical spaces that support learning. Now we'll dive into these priorities more concretely to discuss the superintendent's student learning goals and progress measurements. So each of the student superintendent's student learning goals are aligned to a school committee priority. Student learning goal one is aligned to school committee priority one. Accelerating academic performance is to demonstrate progress in the district-wide strategic implementation of grade-level learning focused on, one, access to high-quality instructional materials, or HQIM; two, regular observance, observation and data cycle, data review cycles to respond to student needs; three, systems and structures to support multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS; and four, implementation of the district's regional model. Progress was measured by data relative to the adoption rate of high-quality instructional materials, observational data collected through instructional rounds using the equitable literacy tool, or ELQ, or EQL, and documentation of multi-tiered systems of support. Now, student learning goal two is aligned to school committee priority two: insurance access for all students, which is to demonstrate progress in the implementation of the district's inclusive education plan focused on, one, enhancing inclusive practices to create the intended instructional conditions; two, expansion of inclusive programming; and three, implementing inclusive settings in grades K-0, K-1, K-2, 7, and 9. Progress was measured by feedback from teachers regarding required professional development, expansion of bilingual programs and programs for multilingual learners, implementation of inclusion settings in grades K-0, K-1, K-2, 7, and 9, and planning completed by school-based inclusive learning plans, or IPTs, teams, excuse me, IPTs, and completing service mapping for the next cycle of implementation. Student learning goal three is aligned to school committee priority three: consistency and high-quality learning opportunities, which is to demonstrate progress in the continued implementation of the district's long-term facilities plan focused on, one, the 2030 vision for the district's footprint; two, implementation of ongoing capital projects; three, the implementation of previously announced closures and mergers; and four, the announcement of the new school closures and mergers, which is school, school committee priority three: consistency and high-quality learning opportunity. Progress was measured by release of a 2030 vision and long-term enrollment projections, progress of capital projects in the district, implementation plan for school closures and mergers, and analysis and engagement to inform school closure and merger announcements. And we want to take a second to explain the DESI rubric versus BPS rubric. For the public and folks watching, this slide juxtaposes the DESI and BPS evaluation rubrics mentioned earlier to illustrate the differences between each. Note that each rating under the BPS rubric is assigned a numerical value for calculating the rating across each standard and an average rating across the entire committee. Also, it's important to note that the proficient rating, as indicated by DESI, is subdivided into two ratings under BPS's rubric, effective or development. We believe this action allows for a nuanced understanding of accountability when evaluating the superintendent's leadership capabilities and actions and growth within the role. So now let's dive a little bit into the evaluation. For standard one on instructional leadership, committee evaluations provided feedback on curriculum and instruction efforts. In regard to strengths, the school committee strongly valued the progress made in fortifying the academic foundation of the district. The superintendent and her team successfully closed out the systemic improvement plan, completed the first iteration of the inclusive education plan rollout, saw NAEP scores return to pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels, and expanded availability of AP options and college and career pathways across high schools. Further, the 100% adoption of high-quality instructional materials across the district and the additional coordinated professional development, 12 hours, that in the district reflects commitment and buy-in from schools. Accountability measures that have been put in place to more deeply accelerate reflective practice via equitable literacy tool and classroom observations and verify critical factors of student success, e.g., for example, student enrollment. So for areas of continued growth, there's agreement across the board from the committee that the district has made positive strides and also as a district, we are not yet where we want to be. Of particular importance is the development of a comprehensive plan to address our persistent opportunity and achievement gaps, particularly for Black and Latinx students, multilingual learners, and multilingual learners with disabilities. We look forward to moving on this in the future and acknowledge the reconvening of the opportunity and achievement gaps task force. Also key in strategic planning is the continued improvement and aligned instructional and professional development support to operationalize a long-term vision for multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities, particularly advancing innovative strategies for teacher preparation and recruitment and district-wide native language instruction. For standard one, instructional leadership using the DESI evaluation ratings, the committee overall rates the superintendent as proficient. Now, if you look at the distribution of evaluation responses, member ratings ranged between developing and highly effective. Moving on to standard two on management and operations, committee evaluations provided feedback on transportation, facilities, human resources, and fiscal systems efforts in particular. In regard to strengths, the district has made significant improvements in transportation following recommendations from the Council of Great City Schools, resulting in beginning the school year fully staffed in drivers and monitors, and the use of Zoom technology to increase on-time performance to 94%, the highest monthly performance in the last five years. Additionally, the district has made great, major strides in tackling facilities work. The district has increased schools with air conditioning from 32% to 92% and has completed nearly 7,500 maintenance requests, and there were more capital projects underway than in decades past. The Office of Human Resources continues to make positive strides via strategic realignment to foster efficiency, improvement in our early hiring rate of school leaders and teachers, targeted recruitment to increase the linguistic and racial diversity of our educators, and alignment to the regional model to meet the needs of schools. Also notable are this year's multiple successful contract negotiations and the proactive staggered calendar approach to ensure all contracts do not expire in the same year in the future. Finally, the district has been strong in coming off of ESAR. It is commendable that BPS avoided layoffs and invested in key priorities such as inclusive education, strengthening key student services, multilingual learning, and college career pathways. For areas of continued growth, our high operating costs continue to be a concern. While the district works closely with our transportation contractor to make our systems as safe as possible, the devastating loss of one of our students requires us to continue to examine our safety measures to ensure this never happens again. Further, our facilities maintenance continues to be a top priority and concern. With over 11,900 work orders submitted, nearly a third remain incomplete. With so many pressing needs, we need to increase the capacity and resources in this area as our buildings are key to supporting the high-quality student experience. The need for closures and mergers is disruptive but essential. We must, however, continue to cultivate deeper clarity around the factors that influence decisions to give the BPS community as much notice as possible. Amidst funding uncertainty, we hope programs that increase the linguistic and racial diversity of our workforce continues. The focus on recruitment is evident. A clear focus on morale and staff retention is also important. We must also continue to strengthen alignment between budget decisions and the greater system-wise goals. For rating for standard two, management and operations, using the DESI evaluation ratings, the committee overall rates the performance of the superintendent as proficient. Again, looking at the distribution of evaluating, evaluation responses, ratings range between developing and highly effective, same as the first as standard number one. For standard three on family and community engagement, community evaluations provided feedback on engagement and communications efforts in particular. In regards to strengths, the superintendent team have put forth a stronger engagement effort to illustrate their willingness to be present for critical conversations and to further elaborate on how community voice is valued and helps shape decisions and policy. This evidenced by, this is evidenced by additional meetings to support transitioning school communities impacted by closures and mergers and the achievement that 110 schools now have a school site council, which has increased engagement around facilities changes, the structural reorganization of the Office of Family and Community Advancement, workshops by parent university, and hiring of staff with more linguistic capacity, especially at the Welcome Center. It's back, thanks. Have allowed for deeper engagement with the diversity of families in the district and have led to 700 migrant families being supported through the BPS registration process. Finally, this has been a year of modernization for technological services with improvements to the BPS website and the use of ParentSquare to provide direct, bidirectional communication for families with teachers and school communities. Under standard three for areas of continued growth, the committee felt we must continue refining and improving engagement practices as we continue to improve our delivery of service. As we continue to improve our delivery of services, we need to continue to consider the staffing and capacity need to execute our priorities well. Authentic community engagement in Boston Public Schools processes should be the ethos across all departments. It involves clear conversations of roles and the navigation of power dynamics within these roles. To this end, the committee sees some areas for continued growth and monitoring. One, ensure that the district is keeping a close eye on how communities of merged and closed schools are coalescing and faring. Two, more clearly articulate equity analysis findings, use of the R E P T to communities, a racial equity planning tool. Three, consider the expansion of welcome centers to include satellite centers. And Four, include families in the testing of BPS products such as the BPS website for iterative improvement of website organization and prioritization of content. The committee provided an average rating of proficient by DESI standards. For Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement Using the DESI Evaluation Rating, as I said, the committee overall rates the superintendent as proficient. Once again, if we look at the distribution of evaluation responses, the ratings range between developing and effective, with the majority providing a range effective. I think we see that on the next slide. Thank you. For Standard Four, on nurturing professional culture, committee evaluations provided feedback on cultural proficiency, continuous learning, and shared vision in particular. In regard to strengths, the district has provided training to prepare staff to adapt to a variety of distant situations to best serve our students and families, including more intentionality to the needs and rights of immigrant families and our LGBTQIA+ community. The district has invested in diversity, equity, and inclusion training for the executive team, including an inclusive leadership assessment with tailored individual recommendations and renewed focus on the opportunity-achievement gaps policy. The conclusion of the Systemic Improvement Plan is a significant accomplishment. Additionally, the offering of multiple leadership fellowships, expanded leadership development programs, and professional learning communities demonstrate a small, strong focus on continuous learning and developing talent from within, with the focus on diversity and an emphasis on staff having the opportunity to improve their practice. Finally, Superintendent Skipper and the work of the district has laid the foundation for a new strategic plan with a clear alignment to the opportunity-achievement gaps policy and the school committee's priorities. For Areas of Continued Growth in this standard, the committee felt the district needs to maintain evaluation of the effectiveness of training with clear metrics and cross-departmental collaboration to assess quality, sustain momentum, and ensure alignment. Professional development aimed at cultural competency and strengthening a sense of belonging needs to be adopted consistently throughout the district, especially in schools with larger equity gaps. Further, school leaders need to be supported in creating accountability systems that are flexible for both teachers and administrators to make changes that better support students. As we continue to strengthen the regional model, we must make sure liaisons in the regional structure are equipped to make positive contributions. Finally, there was a continued need to better highlight successes and to communicate the impact of central office work. We must consider creative ways to involve the media in communications and spotlighting the work of the district. For Standard Number Four, Professional Culture Using the DESI Evaluation Ratings, the committee overall rates the superintendent as proficient. Once again, looking at the distribution of evaluation responses, ratings range between developing and highly effective, the same as Standards One and Two. Now, when Dr. Elkins put these together, taken together the average across all four standards, and this is evaluation the school committee rates the superintendent as effective or proficient by DESI standards, indicating the superintendent's performance consistently exceeded expectations in all essential areas of responsibility and that the quality of work overall was excellent, annual goals were met. When looking at our overall rubric distribution across standards and evaluations, we can calculate an average score of 4.0 out of 5 for the superintendent's rating. This graph shows simply the entire distribution across all standards together, further illustrating consistency across ratings and individual committee member evaluations. When assigning numerical values to each category across the four standards, not only do we see the average rating for the year, but we can also compare it to the previous year's evaluations. And Dr. Elkins asked me particularly to make this point. Though the comparison between this year and last is not shown on this slide, for context, in this year's evaluation, the superintendent improved numerically across every evaluation standard compared to last year. This is important to keep in mind as we discuss the superintendent and BPS's team's collective efforts to unify and operationalize a collective vision for excellence across the district, particularly one that has experienced our level of turnover instability and instability at leadership levels. It is also critical to keep in mind what this growth means for a district that has experienced disruption and is still recovering from the learning losses and chaos of a pandemic. Riding the ship is not easy, but there is confidence from the committee in the direction and stewardship of the district. So to summarize, Areas of Strength: Strong district-wide adaptation of high-quality instructional materials and tier-one instructional focus, paired with aligned professional development and classroom observations to support effective implementation and ensure students do the heavy lifting. Two, strong foundation laid for long-term academic quality, implementation of a district-wide inclusive education plan, increased multi-tiered systems of support, expansion of bilingual and multilingual programs, clear focus on staff development to increase alignment in achieving district goals. Three, measurable progress in core operations which have resulted in significant outcomes that has led to stability after years of leadership and operational instability. There's improved transportation outcomes, on-time performances at a five-year-high, recruitment efforts there have resulted in staff improvements. There's thoughtful implementation of facilities improvements and right-size in the district, the largest capital planning and facilities modernization ever in decades with a clear foundation laid to continue the work. Three, improved financial management stabilization of payroll, avoidance of layoffs despite the end of ESAR funding. Four, conclusion of the Systemic Improvement Plan and the Department of Justice Oversight. And Five, investments in educator pipelines and professional development to ensure students have talented educators able to serve their diverse needs. It goes without saying that while the ship is being righted, the superintendent committee have stated to the district, we are not yet where we want to be. The committee commends growth of the inputs and is still a body that prioritizes and centers outcomes of students as its north star. So Areas of Continued Growth in the coming year that the committee would like to see is a strong foundation for progress has been laid. The district is showing signs of improvement. However, overall student outcomes remain largely unchained and progress is uneven across schools. As we move forward, increased focus on accelerating student outcomes and closing opportunity-achievement gaps is needed. This includes: One, continued focus on strengthening tier-one instruction and increased focus on tier-two and three supports; Two, clear metrics and evaluation processes to measure the effectiveness of our implementation and investment choices on student outcomes. Another area of continued growth is structural progress in the Office of Family and Community Engagement is evident. As we move forward, continue strengthening our system-wide approach and responsiveness to the input of our families; continue building practices that are intentionally shared across departments and facilitate our families being well-formed and able to effectively navigate our systems. The committee looks forward to the renewal of a strategic plan in the coming year. We encourage the superintendent to ensure the plan works with the committee and includes key implementation goals, intentionally aligning the resources as they will anchor the district to our core priorities. We encourage as well to continue to hone and strengthen aligned implementation process. In closing, Dr. Elkins writes, "The superintendent has consistently demonstrated annual growth. We are confident Superintendent Skipper is the leader to continue moving the district towards transformational change." As per the provision in the superintendent's contract, which outlines the potential for contract renewal discussions after July 1, 2025, if the superintendent has reached a rating of proficient or above in the past year, the committee will recommend the school committee chair enter into negotiations with the superintendent on that matter after July 1, 2025 and after the committee votes on this final proficient. Last slide is drawn. On next meeting on July 9, we will vote on the superintendent's evaluation, the summative evaluation as put together by Dr. Elkins. So I thank Dr. Elkins for putting that, doing that all work, putting it together, reading our individual evaluations, doing the math, and coming up with that summative evaluation and writing these comments, which I read on his behalf. I'll now pass it to Chair Robinson and the rest of the committee for questions and comments.
Thank you. I'll now open it up. Questions from the members?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for hard work this year. I think Dr. Elkins realizó muy buen trabajo haciendo como un resumen de todo lo que nosotros dijimos en la voz de Michael O'Neill.
I think, I feel like Dr. Elkins made an awesome summary and a really good job of what we've been talking about.
En la voz de...
In your voice.
I think it's important. El año que viene va a ser un año bien, podemos decir desafiante, porque vamos a trabajar un plan estratégico.
Next year is going to be a very challenging year because we're going to be working on strategic planning.
Y me gustó mucho cuando la superintendente dijo vamos a empezar, literalmente, textualmente voy a leerlo, vamos a empezar el año que viene con más instrucción en lengua materna.
And I liked a lot when Superintendent said, and I'm gonna quote her, "Next year, we're gonna start with instructions on our native languages."
Y yo creo honestamente que estamos viendo un lenguaje diferente. Estamos hablando de más oportunidades. Se abre como un bombillo, se prende una luz para los aprendices del idioma inglés.
And honestly, I think we are facing a new language and this is like lighting up a bulb for new language learners.
Y eso lo valoro. Esperamos que el año que viene trabajar muy fuerte, seguir continuando empujando para que nuestros estudiantes tengan los mejores resultados.
And I highly appreciate that. So next year, we're gonna keep pushing through for our students to have the best results.
Now, now back to Michael O'Neill speaking. I will just strictly say, I have not had the chance to read other members' evaluations. We provided them tonight, so I will read them. I did, as I read Dr. Elkins's comments, Elkins's comments, excuse me, in the summative, I noticed some of my input, and I'm sure other members felt the same way. So that is what a summative is. It's trying to make sure each of our voices are represented. I noticed some of my comments in it, but I also know I learned from fellow members as well and what their reflections are, what they noticed that I may have not have noticed. So I look forward to reading the individual evaluations to then be able to vote on the summative evaluation at our next meeting. But for my individual evaluation, the superintendent's self-evaluation, and Dr. Elkins's summative evaluation, it certainly seemed to me to capture the viewpoints that we've heard consistently at this table during the year, the questions that have been raised, the comments that have been raised, and what I have observed in the district in the past year. So I thank Dr. Elkins for that work, and I look forward to reading my fellow members' evaluations as well.
First of all, I want to thank you, Superintendent Skipper, and your team for the incredible hard work that you all have done this past year. You know, I really see this, that we finally have a strong foundation. I mean, I don't think there was any aspect of work that hasn't been touched upon that is going to help create that, whether it be getting the high-quality materials there, making sure that schools are using them, doing all of the focusing. You know, I've often said that this district has two key audiences. It's educators that we are trying to work with and to improve their ability to work with the wide variety of students that we need, and the district has to invest in both sides. And it's clearly been seen that that work has been done. There is still a lot to do. I think we all, we all agree with that, and I'm hoping that, obviously not just you, but all of our adults, be they the parents who have got to get our kids to school, as well as all of our teachers, et cetera, understand that it is more important than ever that we all work together, if at all, that we're gonna be able to see and realize the changes for students that we support every single day of the work that everybody comes here to do. It's a lot. And as we, and I think all of us will say out loud or continuously think about is that the world around us is not making it easy for us as we move forward, particularly because of the students that we serve. We have a very diverse population of kids, many English-language learners, and many communities that are being pushed out against by our federal government. So it's going to be a very tricky balance of how we're able to go forward and continue to support the very students that we want to support. These are our kids. And how we do that work and how we make sure that our adults are all committed to supporting the students we have will continue to be part of the ongoing training and support that we will be looking forward to as we move forward. The area of parent and community engagement continues to be that thorn in all of our sides in terms of figuring out how best to support the variety of families that this district supports. We see it all the time that we have people all over the map in terms of their particular needs and what they see as success and how they want to be supported, but that it's really the district's job to figure out how to do it well for all. So we will continue to push in that area, but also to work and support you and your team. And I want to find more ways that we can hear from our public and from a wider variety of our public as well. There are many quiet voices within our public who we don't hear from unless there's something not going well. But I think one of our challenges is to figure out how to make sure all voices find a way, whether they are happy or whether they are having concerns, that they can give us more feedback in order for us as a district to help the most. But again, thank you so much for getting us this far, and we look forward to continuing to move forward on the next meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
And again, I want to say thank you to Dr. Elkins for leading the superintendent evaluation process and to Vice Chair O'Neill for sharing the presentation this evening. And again, as I said, thank you to you, Superintendent Skipper, and your team for the work you've accomplished in the past year. We thank you for the way you engaged in this evaluation process and your commitment to continuous growth and improvement in service of our team, our students, and our families, is clear, and the data you presented and the reflections you shared and your openness to discourse. So we will vote on the superintendent's evaluation at the July 9 meeting. Okay. Our last report of the evening is the Exam Schools Update. Okay, let's aim to keep this presentation within 20 minutes. Okay, let's aim to keep this presentation within 20 minutes. I'd like to remind our presenters to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. And I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. So tonight, we have Chief of Data, Information and Systems Improvement Monica Hogan and Senior Advisor for Strategy and Opportunity Gaps Colin Rose, who will give an update on the district's exam school policy. First, as a reminder, this policy is important and it impacts only three of 112 schools. While this policy will rightfully generate much discussion and attention, I want to assure the public that the committee, my team, and I remain focused on the larger district and the needs of all students. When this policy was put in place, the district and school committee at the time knew that it might need to be adjusted. The policy itself asked for a thorough review after five years, and we're now at that five-year mark. This past December, we promised to come back to this committee with an analysis of the policy impact over the last five years and some additional data for consideration. As requested by this committee, we have tried to improve the policy with each minor change over the past several years. Yet, some of the core of feedback we hear publicly on the different versions of this policy have not been fully addressed. That it pits schools against each other and neighborhoods against each other. Tonight, we begin the process, and we are just beginning, the process of reexamining what, if any, changes should be recommended, and that process will continue into the fall. Our district goal remains the same, to create an equitable and transparent policy that ensures that all students have the opportunity to apply for a seat at one of the city's three exam schools. Tonight, we will show you three simulations that are refinements of our original policy. These are only three simulations, and I'm sure this committee will want to see others as we go through this process. If we choose to make a change, I would recommend a robust community conversation to gather feedback from the committee and from the community. And if we decide to make a change, I want to make a recommendation to this body on a clear policy that is equitable and fair, holds to the tenants of the original policy to ensure socioeconomic and geographic diversity, and one that will stay in place without further change for multiple years so that students and families understand the process, can make an informed decision when they apply to attend an exam school, and as a district, we can reliably track trends in the data. I know I'm gonna have comments in the presentation, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Monica and Colin.
Good evening, School Committee. Superintendent Skipper, back in the hot seat. Picked a very easy topic to ease myself back into the district. Today, we'll talk a little bit about the exam school policy, a review, kind of a retrospective of the last five years, and then look at some scenarios. And I'm really gonna kind of drive the retrospective piece and pass it on to my colleague Monica, who will talk a little bit about the simulations. So, as we need to reiterate kind of multiple times tonight, I want to start off by saying this is just an exploration of data and not a decision point or a recommendation that we're bringing before you today. So I wanted to start with the context. In 2021, Boston School Committee voted to amend the Boston Public Schools' exam policy to promote more equitable citywide access to the district's exam schools. As school committee commissioned, the task force explored possible admissions policies with the goals of expanding the applicant pool, maintaining academic rigor, and generating a student body that reflects the racial, socioeconomic, and geographic diversity of all students in the city of Boston. Essentially, it's the belief that there's brilliance across all of our neighborhoods in all of the corners of the city, from all backgrounds. And if we are to have exam schools, we must make sure that there's access for all of those children. As in any process, it's important to keep that history and those values in mind. Based on the work of that task force, the superintendent at the time, Dr. Casellius, recommended and the school committee approved a new admissions policy that considered students composite scores, which are made up of GPA, and a test MAP assessment, to distribute an equal number of exam invitations across socioeconomic tiers in Boston, and assign students additional points in Title I schools, which is 40% more economically disadvantaged, as well as points for students in public housing, experienced homelessness, or in the care of DCF. The policy required a review after five years to analyze the outcomes. And in December 2024, this last December, the district also announced that we'd be conducting an analysis to explore other variables connected to some issues that folks were hearing. So that's why we're here today. I'm gonna pass this along to Monica.
So before we go further in the presentation, we just wanted to remind everyone of what the current admissions policy is. So our current policy divides the city into four socioeconomic tiers. This is done based on data from the U.S. Census, the American Community Survey. Interested students then rank an exam school, take the MAP test, and submit grades. Test scores count for 30% of the student's composite score and their GPA counts for 70%. Additional points are then added for students attending a school with 40% or more economically disadvantaged students. The number of points they receive is determined based on the tier differential, which you may remember as a policy change two years ago. And students experiencing homelessness in the care of the Department of Children and Families and living in Boston Housing Authority housing also receive additional points. Invitations are then distributed to the highest-scoring applicants within each tier. Each tier receives an equal number of invitations, and they are distributed within that tier. All seats at a student's first-choice school are filled. The applicant is invited to their second or third choice, depending on which schools still have seats available.
Although the original aim was to do this retrospective and exploration of updates to the admissions policy after five years, the policy has been tweaked every year. This table shows the changes over the last six years, going back to the years immediately preceding the task force recommendations and including the tweaks starting in 2022, 2023. In many ways, the data will show movement towards the goals and values of the policy while still reflecting that we have a ways to go. As you can see in this table, applicants to exam schools have increased every year, starting in 2022, 2023 to today. The drops in applications between 2020 and 2022 were mainly due to policy changes. So in 2020, 2021, the district moved to administer the IACE in schools, something that we were intimately involved in, during the school day, allowing more access for students. At that time, any student who took that test automatically became an applicant. So that's why you see those huge numbers in 2020, 2021. That changed during COVID, where students had to at least have a B average and select at least one of the exam schools to be considered an applicant. Now, we'll take a look at what effects the policy changes have had on the makeup of the student body at the exam schools as well as invitations. So as you can see in this slide, the policy did work to increase the percentage of economically disadvantaged students at exam schools, although we're not at parity, as the percentage of economically disadvantaged students in the district has also increased over the years. The percentage of students with disabilities, multilingual learners and former English learners has stayed consistent, except for an increase in former English learners at BLS. Multilingual learners and students with disabilities are generally not reflective of the student body in BPS, which is a longer-term issue we'll talk about later. This show, slide shows the racial, ethnic demographics of the three exam schools, pre-admission changes in 2019, 2020 compared to this year's student body. All three schools have seen an overall student demographic to be more reflective of the city, with BLA and O'Brien continuing to be much more reflective than Boston Latin School. This slide shows the distribution of invitations across the city's neighborhoods. The far left is the city's population distributed, distribution of fifth and sixth graders just in general. In the middle is the 2020, 2021, and the far right is the 2025, 2026 maps by exam school invitations. If you focus on the shading for the 2025, 2026 map, it is much more reflective of the city's population than it was in 2020, 2021, before the policy changes came into effect. Students' chances of getting in, an invitation into exam schools does vary by sending school and socioeconomic tier. There are more applicants and therefore more competition for exam school invitations in higher socioeconomic tiers, which are the higher numbers. After the policy tweak moving from eight tiers to four tiers, this year, that difference has decreased significantly now between tier one and tier four. This slide shows the invitation rates over the past several years to exam schools by race, ethnicity, as compared to the city's and district's demographics, as well as the percentage of multilingual learners and students with disabilities receiving invitations over time. As you can see, the race, ethnicity percentages immediately became more reflective post the change in policy, although not to parity with the district or the city, and stayed fairly consistent over the, over a few years. However, this year's invitation has shown a 7% decrease in the number of blacks, in the percentage of black students receiving invitations. Due to the amount of changes to the policy, potential social factors, and limited time to analyze this trend, I think we got this data about a month ago or less, it's difficult at this time to pinpoint exactly what might be, be to explain for this dip. The percentage of economically disadvantaged students in former ELLs rose and has stayed constant throughout the years, while the percentage of multilingual learners and students with disability initially rose, but now has fallen back in the current year's data to 1% and 2%, respectively. This chart shows the minimum composite scores to receive an invitation varies by socioeconomic tier and by exam school. Students in tier four need a higher composite score to receive an invitation to exam schools as compared to students in tier one. Again, after the move from eight tiers to four tiers this year, that difference is not as stark as in the past. Now, I'm gonna pass it to Monica.
So as part of the presentation we gave in December, we identified the questions on this slide for further analysis based on the feedback that we've heard over the last several years related to the admissions policy. These questions informed the analysis that we performed this spring that we will now go into more depth on. As Colin mentioned earlier, our, our work to increase access to exam schools, we know it must go beyond the admission policy alone. This work to increase access for our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners requires more time to develop a broader, longer-term structure of supports, staffing, and facilities changes at both the district and school levels to accompany any change in policy. As we thought about the desired outcomes of this policy analysis, we identified four components. Maintain the basic structure of distributing invitations across socioeconomic tiers. Ensure that the highest-scoring students from across Boston have a path to an exam school. Simplify the policy so it is easy to understand and can be implemented effectively and craft a policy designed to remain stable for multiple years.
I just, once again, want to remind people of the process. Today, we're just looking at and examining data, both kind of in a retrospective way and looking at some scenarios that could be in the universe of many scenarios. This summer, there'll be some engagement around this presentation, both the data and the simulations. And then, if there is any updates to the policy, all those discussions and decisions will be made sometime in the fall. And so just to remind everyone, we're really in this data stage even before we get into engaging the public.
So before we move into the simulation data of tonight's presentation, I'm gonna spend a few minutes going through the different variables that we considered in the analysis that we did. So the first variable is the additional points. As you know, students can receive additional points in two different ways in the current policy. One, based on if they attend a school where 40% or more of the students are considered economically disadvantaged. And the second, for students experiencing homelessness, living in BHA-owned housing or in the care of DCF. We've heard a lot of feedback on the school-based points, that they're both hard to explain and understand and can make it mathematically difficult for students with high composite scores in some tiers to receive an invitation. And so as you can see on this slide, the percentage of applicants receiving those school-based points has increased over the past four invitation cycles. This increase changes the impact of those points. As more students receive them, they become less impactful and not as close to the original intention of providing additional points to some students. The second variable we looked at in this analysis was the addition of a citywide round. A citywide round is a means to ensure that students with the highest composite scores have a path to an exam school. This could be implemented in one of two ways. You could either allocate 20% of the seats at each exam school to the students with the highest composite scores, or you could allocate 20% of the seats overall, without a threshold by school, to the students with the highest composite scores. The third variable we looked at was the sizing of the socioeconomic tiers. You might remember that currently, the socioeconomic tiers are sized based on the city's population of students in grades five through eight. And what we considered in this analysis was the impact of sizing the tiers by the number of applicants in that year's admissions cycle. So this would create tiers that have an equal number of applicants, resulting in a similar invitation rate for each tier. Colin shared earlier the differences in invitation rate by tier that we have seen over the last few admissions cycles. The applicant-based tiers would likely increase representation from neighborhoods that have more applicants, making it less geographically representative. It'll come back. This change would also have an impact on the timeline for invitations to be sent as we would not be able to determine the tiers until we have determined eligibility of applicants. And we estimate that this would delay invitations by at least two weeks from when they are currently sent.
All right. Before Monica jumps into some of the data around the simulations, I wanted to talk about what a simulation is and what it is, right? So a simulation uses data from previous admissions years to create a what-if scenario. What if we had this policy last year? This can be helpful because it gives you good insight on how a change in policy might change outcomes with real data. But it also assumes a few things. It assumes that the applicant pool will not change significantly from year to year, which might not be true. And the second piece is that they cannot predict social behavior, right? Changes in behavior once people understand the implications of a policy change. And so those are things that you need to think about as you think about simulations and how that might affect in the real world. But these are good starting points to have a conversation around what if we had this policy.
So we'll share tonight data from three possible simulations. So we'll share tonight, um, data from three possible simulations using data from both the 2425 and 2526 applicant pools. You will see on the next few slides data that reflects results under the current policy, as well as the three following simulations. Um, so these three simulations all remove the school-based points and reduce the number of points for students experiencing homelessness in the care of DCF or living in BHA housing to ten from fifteen. Simulation A uses tiers that are sized based on the number of applicants and continues to distribute all one hundred percent of invitations by tier. Simulations B and C both use tiers that are sized based on the population, which is consistent with the current policy. Each of these has a citywide round, with simulation B's citywide round reserving twenty percent of seats at each school, and simulation C's citywide round reserving twenty percent of seats overall. I will move a little quickly through the simulation data slides. So the first two slides you'll see show the results for each simulation by tier. You'll see that the current policy and simulation A both result in each tier receiving the same number of invitations. Simulations B and C have an addition of the citywide round, resulting in different numbers of invitations by socioeconomic tier. And this slide shows the same data but using the school year 2526 applicant pool instead. So it is also, um, the invitations distributed by tier. This slide shows the simulation results for different student groups. Multilingual learners, former English learners, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. The gray columns show the percentage for that group in the BPS population, as well as the results from the school year 2021 invitation cycle, which was the last year to use the ISEE test prior to COVID. This slide shows the simulation results by race with the citywide percentages, and again, the school year 2021 invitation percentages in the gray columns on the left. And this final simulation slide shows the minimum and average composite scores for each of the three exam schools, as well as the maximum score for students who did not receive an invitation.
Looks like we have less than twenty seconds. I'm not used to this buzzer. So I don't know what's gonna happen when it hits zero, but, uh, I just want to again, uh, remind people of the process. Uh, we are in a space where we're looking at data, um, and exploring some simulations. There'll be some, there, there we go, some engagement this summer. Uh, and again, if there is any changes to the policy that will happen, those discussions will happen in the fall and beyond. So, uh, happy to take any questions, uh, from the committee.
Thank you for your presentation on that.
Hi, thank you for the presentation of the exploring that y'all are doing. I, I appreciate the friendly reminder, because a lot of times when the district comes to the school committee, it can often feel like we're just having a conversation about a proposal and not just having a dialogue and exploring data or any information that can help, uh, or guide, you know, the decision-making. I think, you know, just the size of how many years and how many times the district have tried to come with a solution, as much as we want to explore, it's just really important that we remind ourselves that every year that we're just exploring is another missed opportunities for, for some families. But I do understand that there is care here that we're making sure whatever the policy is doesn't leave families behind. But also, in a perfect world, maybe every single school of VPS would be a perfect school, and we wouldn't have to make decisions or give out points or have to look into the different, uh, factors that we talked about, like socioeconomic, race, and all of that. I don't have, um, a particular question. I just, I'm hoping that whenever this body is having this conversation, we're voting on a particular proposal that is not just to look into like what's gonna happen next year, because every year we're gonna come with a different result, a different, you know, data that we're looking, because every year there's been a policy change. So how many policy changes are we gonna do every year in order to get it right? So that is my big, you know, concern. Um, but I'm, I'm hoping that, um, with the different simulations that you all have, with all this data that we do have from the past five years, we can make a decision that doesn't feel like a bandage, but actual, you know, a system that is going to prevail and stay, uh, longer. But thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate it.
So, thank you for this presentation. I found it fascinating how you laid it all out, and particularly how you talked about what we've heard from a whole range of community, um, folks that are interested in this process. Obviously, as the superintendent started off by saying, this is three of our hundred-plus schools. They are three of our larger schools. I, I do grant that, and there is obviously intense interest across our district, even though we as a committee often wish folks would realize that we have other great schools besides these three schools. Having said that, I'm really, um, interested, Ms. Hogan in particular, and thank you both for the presentation, by the way, and your thoughtful analysis. And I, I kind of have two questions, one for each of you, if I may. I'm really fascinated in how you presented each of the scenarios, but then you looked at what the impact put, a simulation, excuse me, scenarios, but then you simulated in how it would be compared to the applicant pool from 2425, and then the applicant pool from 2526. And you see differences in each, because as Dr. Rose, you had pointed out, there are changes between 24 and 25. And so, two questions, one probably for you, Ms. Hogan. When you're, when you're looking at that two different applicant pools, is there a way to average or to look at, you know, we have multiple years now. So instead of just because you're, you're looking at a moment in time, and as Dr. Rose pointed out, there are differences between the two pools. And I'm gonna ask you about that in a minute, Dr. Rose. But is there a, a way to look at like, an average of the past three years? Or am I, am I pushing the thinking too far on that?
That's a great question. I think we can think about how we might, um, sort of combine applicant pools across years to think about what, um, almost like a simulated dataset, um, rather than actual applicants. I think it is tricky, as you see when you look at the differences in the applicant pool of just different groups of students being more represented in different applicant pools and making different choices year to year. That it is a little tricky, um, to sort of determine how to do that. But I think it is, um, I think what we've generally been doing is looking at the applicant pool separately and then sort of looking at averages across, um, the multiple years of the policy that we have. But I think that is also tricky, because each year has had a slightly different set of rules applied to them for admissions.
Keep changing the tiers is an example.
Right, and so I think we, we could also think about using additional historical years of data, and trying to apply the same rules we have now where possible, but, um, it gets complicated, and I think you can, you can sort of do analysis for years on some of this and not necessarily be able to predict any better what a particular policy change might reflect.
I hear you, and I'm, and I'm very conscious of asking, oh, well, let's look at it this way, let's look at it that way, right? You, you have helped, uh, teach me on the implementation steps, and so thank you for pointing out one of these may result in a longer time, because if we go to applicants, then we need to find, wait to see how many applicants there are per tier before you size it, and that adds time. So thank you for that. So I am sensitive to adding more. But I'm also curious, because when we see a difference between two years, and then when you're in the simulations office, you're looking, and you go, oh, I don't like the results there. And yet, is it a moment of time? That, so I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way we can think about that, and we're gonna have plenty of time on this, so let's just, just put it on the table. And Dr. Rose, I, I want to go back to, so when we talk about the difference between the two years, and, and you hinted at a couple of things in your comment, or I interpreted as a hint, when I underlined, uh, one line that you said, and I don't mean it in a bad way, but, um, shoot, I'm sorry, I should have had that page ready. "Simulations cannot predict how policy changes may change behavior." And we have seen that, right? We, we know that from anecdotal evidence, from parents who come and talk to us at school committee, or the emails we all get. I get an email from a parent who, um, they're a divorced family, and the child spends half the time with the mother, half the time with the father. And when they went to apply, they thought they were both in the same neighborhood in the city. They didn't think twice about it. They put down the mother's address. It turned out, the mother was in tier, what we now call tier four. The father, who has the child half the time, is in tier, what we now call tier three. And they missed the cutoff for a school, they had a, I think you had ninety-seven point four in here, they had a ninety-seven point two, which if they had put in the father's address, it would have been acceptance. So, you know, we hear about this from parents who come and testify us all the time, the, the concern they have over the tiers, and, and then they say to us, well, we hear about this person moved and that person moved, or they're changing schools because of the school points. So could you explore for me a little bit, Dr. Rose, your thoughts on some of the things that may be impacting the change in results i- in admissions year to year? I mean, I think about his grades as well, right? Do we have disparity in the grades are given out?
I think there's social implications. I think there's, like, we've said it, I think, five times. Like, if you, if you change and tweak a, a policy every year, it's gonna be hard to follow that ball and see what might be part policy, what might be part social construct, people's understanding of the policy. Maybe they understand parts of the policy that was implemented two years ago, that now they're catching up on and, and making adjustments. So I, part of my thought is, if you're making changes, and as you, as you think about making changes, to not just go on what a simulation might tell you, but if a change significantly would open up loopholes, for instance, for people to do things and maneuver, like, that needs to be under consideration as well. I think there, there's some qualitative analysis that needs to happen just in general around some of the, the, the changes this year, that might tell us some things around things like grades or, you know, movement of, of families. But, um, I just think that's a variable that needs to be considered anytime you change a policy.
I, I don't wanna jump too head-on into something I'm sure the chair is gonna bring up, because she asks it every single time, which is how are the students are doing? But what I, I'm gonna make that, I'm gonna ask that a slightly different way. Because I know our colleges, or many colleges are starting to rethink. They moved away from entrance exams, right? And now some are starting to rethink it, because they're saying the research is, some of the exams actually are helpful in predicting how students will do. And I'm wondering, I, I, I was fascinated to read and hear that we're having a study done, was it Loyola? Is looking at how our students are doing and the student experience, and that will be really interesting to hear their findings. But do we think the map is working, because we have grades and the map assessment? And so in the simulations, you didn't look at the mix of that, and I understand it. But do we have disparity in how grades are given out? Is the map assessment a better judge of how our students are doing? Is that less inclined to have disparities based upon how schools, schools view grades, as an example? I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, dig in on a couple of the different pieces that all impact a student's composite score.
Yeah, I mean, I think any, any measure that has subjectivity to it or potential bias can be problematic. And that can be grades, right? So, right now, grades are weighted at seventy percent in the formula, whereas, uh, tests can also have bias. So this is like part of the struggle of what the right combination should be, and, you know, and what measures. I think to Dr. Rose's point, you know, when you think about the social implication piece, we're talking about behavioral change. And so that can be everything from, you know, we see higher amounts of our students choosing secondary schools, not leaving the system without an exam invite, but actually staying and choosing another secondary school in Boston. It's a really great thing. That's a behavioral change. Relocation to other parts of the city. It can be a life change that families decide to make, or change of schools. You know, this gets kind of back into the, we don't wanna pit schools against schools and neighborhoods against neighborhoods. But those are all like things that are behavioral changes, social changes, that can impact what the results of a particular applicant pool are.
I think your, your question was how the, how are the students doing in, in the schools? I think that's-
I was channeling our chair. I guarantee he was gonna be asking that.
Twofold. I think, I, I don't see anything in the data that's remarkably different than, than the past. But I also think as a district, as we grow, we need to be able to support all students in all of our schools. So I think partly that's on us, if we're looking at the student experience data correctly. It's not just about who's, who's entering in exam schools. It's how are we supporting every skid, kid in an, in exam school to do the best that they can, to bring out their talent? So, um, I think that's, that cuts both ways.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rose. Thank you. This is the beginning, as, as that's, the sheet clearly lays out, this is the beginning of a process that is gonna be continuing for quite a while before you even get to a recommendation. So I'm sure we'll be digging in on this multiple times.
I wanna, I wanna go back to the question that Mr. O'Neill raised around how are they doing? And I guess my question often has been, um, the entry and the acceptance into an exam school is one point. And my question has often been, how are we preparing all of our students to be able to be successful irregardless of points or other things? But are students ready to do grade-level seventh-grade work across all socioeconomic and racial and other needs in terms of being prepared to be successful in a rigorous environment?
I would think the superintendent agrees that that is the work of the district, right? I think it's not just about these three schools.
No, no, every student, no matter what. But I'm, I'm particularly concerned as we provide a certain manipulation to provide opportunity for one student over another, you know, to add these things that if we took all of those things away, and it was just on the individual student's preparation, are we sending students to these, to, to all of our seventh grades, ready to do seventh-grade work? Ready to be successful because they have been prepared? Not just, you know, not that, you know, we, we talk about are the grades actual? Is an A in school X equal to an A in school B? All of those things, you know, when they're all sitting in seventh-grade math, are they all ready to do seventh-grade math? Or are we finding even kids who've gotten into our exam schools are really doing fourth-grade math? I guess I'm trying to understand overall our preparation for our students to be successful, no matter where they are.
Yeah, so I think, um, I think just a few kind of data pieces. So one is when we, we sort of look at the, the grade side, or, or say when we look at the MCAS side, I don't think we're seeing any big stark differences at the exam schools that we're not seeing more broadly in the district and throughout the state pandemically, which is that students have gaps, and they have gaps from that learning. So we're not seeing anything that would indicate a bigger- So we're not seeing anything that would indicate a bigger issue there. We have recent attrition data and I don't think we're seeing much there either. It's very consistent, you know, it varies depending on the year and the applicant pool and what the rules were under that particular year. But we're not actually seeing any incredible increases in attrition, meaning that students that are at the exam schools are staying at the exam schools. I think, you know, this has been a big argument around advanced placement for years as to who should have access to advanced placement. And what we've come to learn is that when students are given the appropriate supports, students do just fine who previously would have been restricted from not being able to take it. So we, years ago in the district, adopted an AP for all where students can choose and elect to do that. And what we've found is that by providing and changing our adult behavior and giving the right supports, we have more students than ever that represent the demographic and the socioeconomic of our district who are doing fine. So I don't think right now, Chair, we see in any of the major data points for the exam schools that we're seeing anything to the difference right now. And we've, we've also spoken with each of the exam school leaders each year and they're reporting the same. What I will say is that I think we have learned that post pandemic, all students need support. So we've invested more in our ESI, our exam school initiative for the summer. I think if you guys remember right, we increased by 100 seats, which was about a third of the total last year. We will continue to do that. We have expanded into the fall programming. All three exam schools, much like the other schools, have programs during the school year that provide additional tutoring and support for their, you know, day-to-day academic material and so forth. And we'll continue to do that because frankly, we need to do that across all, you know, all, across all of our students. In fact, earlier today, I was reviewing a dataset, interestingly enough, favorite part of my day, but I was reviewing a dataset for alternative education. And the biggest uptick of referrals to the re-engagement center happens to be right now are 16, 17, and 18-year-olds. And that maps back in pandemic to when they began, like in the, they were like basically 11 and 12. And so I think we're seeing that same bubble move up through the exam schools, which coincides very much with the data, you know, on the exam school policy. So again, we're not seeing anything different there than we're seeing in just broader BPS data or broader state data.
Yeah, but it's still, I guess, disturbs me when I see that particularly the numbers for black and brown kids are going down in our data, which says they're not, either their math scores are lower or their grades are lower, even if they were getting points or whatever else that we're doing. So there's something again in that earlier preparation is what I'm looking at, is what are we doing from kindergarten to fifth grade to give them those foundational skills so that by the time they're taking these tests that mean more in the fifth and sixth grade, they actually have those baseline skills to be able to, you know, at least be accepted into that next step. And irregardless of school, but that that's the issue. You know, I'm struck by the number of students, I mean, Northeastern offers this, you know, in, what do they call foundational year program for kids who come out of Boston, who aren't quite ready to do college work. And I, you know, I thank them for offering that, but I'm wishing that weren't the case that all of our graduates are ready to do full college work and not, you know, sort of a quasi-high school year support to get you ready for college. When we graduate, we should be ready, no matter what school we go to. And, you know, again, my other question often is what's the value of a BPS diploma if it means different things depending on the school that you come out of? And that should not be the case. All of our kids should be equally ready. And, you know, clearly the reason why families clamor for two or three schools is that somehow they feel something more magical is going on there that's getting their kids a better shot at being prepared than they are in the rest of our school.
I mean, I wouldn't push back against most of the stuff that you said, but I think there are other schools in this district and.
Oh, no, I'm, I do.
I know, but in the, in the public sphere, I think we quite often, as we have this conversation around three of our quote unquote lead schools, we tend to denigrate the other schools. And I think there's other, and I'm not saying that you're doing it, but I think just generally for public consumption, there are, you know, a lot of my colleagues that are running spectacular schools that aren't these three schools. And so I think reminding people that kids go to Harvard out of a lot of our schools, they go to MIT out of a lot of our schools, just to put that in the public sphere so that that doesn't continue to be a talking point, I think, for, you know, East Boston High School or the Quincy, who are really doing wonderful things and folks are really actually weighing whether they want to stay in their neighborhood, go to those schools. That's what we really need to be talking about and replicating across the city. So there isn't this pressure and the oxygen taken out of the room by these three schools consistently.
Yeah, I would also, I say, you know, anytime we see a difference in data, we owe to try to figure that out. And so I think as we spoke about, we see in the applicant pool from 24, 25 to 25, 26, some differences of data, particularly with our black applicants, that black student applicants that we need to drill down on and try to understand better. We actually don't see it with our Latinx students. And so it's something that we are like very much honing in on and trying to understand better and will continue to do that.
Well, thank you. I know that this is just the very beginning of a conversation around this. And we look forward to really taking a deep dive into looking at what you've given us tonight and look forward to more conversations as we move forward. Thank you. I know this work is not easy, but thank you for.
Back in the hot seat. That's all right.
Helping us to understand it better. Thank you so much. I'll now turn it back to public comment. Ms. Carvex?
We have two speakers on reports.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Deirdre Manning.
Thank you for the opportunity. Do I have three minutes?
You have two minutes.
Two? Oh, goodness. I first want to say, this is the emperor has no clothes moment. This is all information that's been readily available for years and it's just really discouraging that it's taken this long to bring it to a point where we can discuss it. I want to add that this doesn't go far enough. Evaluating the policy should also include the inequitable implementation that increases the difficulty for non-BPS students to receive a seat at an exam school, specifically the superintendent circular, which is hard to find or maybe impossible to find with the new website. The grade conversion for standard-based grades that is only used for BPS fifth graders, a real-world example, takes the composite score of a student who had standard-based grades and they are hard to get that four, and it depressed that overall composite score by four entire points in a competitive environment where decimals, not points, decide admission. Map testing conditions are wildly different for non-BPS students. They are not providing accommodations to non-BPS students, such as a familiar test administrator for students with anxiety. Students have to take back-to-back ELA in math on a weekend at an unfamiliar testing site, unfamiliar test administrators, and without their peers. This year, non-BPS students tested on the weekend were told that only students with an extra time accommodation could take the map without a time limit. That is really, really distressing. The process must include meaningful opportunities for public engagement. Two or three-minute soundbites are not an effective way for parent voices to be heard and their input to be included. And all stakeholders need access to data. The original task force didn't represent people who are now being excluded. That can't be what happens going forward. There's no student outcome data, which makes it impossible to evaluate the options. Current applicants and the community were not made aware of changes, which likely deprived an applicant that is now possibly not targeted for exclusion. That person missed a testing opportunity this past May 31st.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Chardewine.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathleen Chardewine. I'm a BPS parent from Charlestown. I generally agree with Deirdre Manning, but I do want to take a slightly different tactic here. I really want to thank you for the analysis. It's comprehensive and it accurately captures the concerns that families have been raising to everyone, the school committee, the district, the mayor for four years now. So thank you. Eliminating the school-based bonus points, as all the scenarios depict, that is a meaningful step towards addressing those concerns. And further, scenario A, tier size based on the number of applicants, that is the fix-the-math solution that parents have advocated for, for over four years. It's the only scenario that addresses what the memo now acknowledges, that the policy allows students, including those in lower socioeconomic statuses, to be disadvantaged based on where they live. And that's a situation that directly contradicts the district's stated values. Now, while it's uplifting to see this analysis and the proposed changes, the acknowledgement of the reality here, and quotes, a significant number of students with high composite scores are not receiving an invitation. That's a reality that's persisted for four years and it's troubling that it's not accompanied by any remedy for these students. I'd encourage the district to explore creative solutions there. Lastly, two more technical points. Ms. Hogan said that you'd have to wait to assign applicants to tiers until the applicants apply. That's not true. You just have to wait to know how many invitations each tier should receive. And the second point, technical point, is the comparison of.
Chair, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any new business?
No.
All right, that concludes our business for this evening. Please note, the next school committee special meeting will be virtual and will take place on Zoom on Tuesday, July 9th at 5:30 PM. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Here we none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.